We call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order. I would like to first welcome our guest councilor, Joni McClintock, sitting in for Commissioner Lewis at this point. You're now a commissioner, you'll be a guest councilor in a little bit. And with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, on our god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kaiser?
President.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Chair McCoy?
Here.
Commissioner Asik?
Here.
Commissioner Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
And guest councilor McClintock is sitting in for Vice Chair Lewis.
Commissioner Nanki, could you sit in for Commissioner Lewis as Vice Chair, please?
I can. I'm looking at a different version of our agenda than the standard agenda, so I will buzz over to that one.
Approval, do we have any addition or deletion?
There are no additions or deletions.
Okay, thank you. Public comment? We have a public comment. Hello, welcome, David. And you're, I think, a veteran at this. Remember, you've got three minutes. After two minutes, the yellow light comes on. After three minutes, the red light comes on and your testimony is going to be completed. So introduce yourself and what ward you're in, or your address.
Ward three. And I was wondering, the city council will approve housing, more funding for the ones that need services after five o'clock for housing for the special needs population. A lot of them are homeless and don't have any services after five, so I was wondering if we can have a backup system for the police department, get services after five o'clock for them. In the middle of the night, some of them call me and they don't get anywhere else to go. So I was wondering if we can build more shelters for this problem for Salem here. And I'm asking the registrar to get more funding soon as possible. Get it done, get it, we don't want to have this, any more problems like this again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for David? Thank you for coming down, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nanki, the consent calendar?
I would move the consent calendar as presented.
With one pull, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Three, three A.
With one pull, three, three A by Commissioner Anderson.
Of course. Commissioner Nanki has moved the consent calendar with one pull, approval of consent calendar with a pull of three, three A by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Anderson.
I move we accept and adopt the fiscal year 2017, '18 operating budget and HUD certification.
Second. Moved in second by Commissioner Anderson, to your motion.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Director Wilch. And the first one relates to the operating budget. By far, the hugest amount is twenty and a half plus million dollars from HUD. And in reading your report, it's pretty clear that that allocation has yet to be made, and even in previous federal administrations, it was often made after our fiscal year. I'm wondering if you could comment on the, your view of the state of the current possibility to receive that amount of money from the Housing and Urban Development Department of the United States.
Yes, sir. I, SHA always looks really deep, deep, deep down into our operating side of this to make sure that we can cover our operations, keep our staff in positions as well as, and most importantly, for the clients, to get them into housing. I think a bigger issue, rather than can we, will HUD give us that amount of money, is can we find enough housing for our rental voucher holders to live in? I think we'll get that HUD amount of money, but that doesn't mean that we're able to utilize it all during the next year.
And the problem with the vouchers is HUD also is behind the allocation per individual voucher, and it's too low to find someplace in the current market.
It is.
What's your anticipation about that? Do you think that's going to change?
Well, I don't think it's going to change. I think when the market goes up, there's always something really bad that happens for it to go down, and I don't see that happening. But we are working with a lot more landlords. We are creating friendships with a lot of folks and trying to get the city, the community to support our clients.
Well, I appreciate all that, Director Wilch, but I didn't mean the housing market going up. I meant the amount of vouchers that HUD gives you. Are they going to go up?
No, they won't. HUD has two tests, really. Either you utilize all your vouchers or you spend all of your money. Now, it's interesting, it's more likely to spend all of the money because how high the rents are.
Yeah.
Three years ago, it would have been about utilizing all your vouchers and still having money left over. So it's kind of switched here really, really quickly. And as you know, those ninety percent of our funds are federal funds, and they're discreet to specific programs. So you can't move them from one to another. Even if you have resources left in one program, it's got to stay with that program.
And I anticipate, of course, that you will be coming back to us when HUD does allocate the monies, probably in January of next year, to give us a report on hopefully how we can allocate those funds in the best possible way.
Yeah, and that's a great idea. And, you know, we see so many more needs just over the last two months, three months, catastrophes. And we know that HUD's going to have to find a way to give some of that resource back. And we're just hoping that it doesn't take us away from the number of clients that we can serve.
Andy, I've got a couple of questions, too. In one of your budget notes, having to do with voucher housing assistant payments, you noted that you were using net restricted positions, NRP funds, and you spent $450,000 in the last fiscal year, I think, to offset cuts? Is that what's going on?
Yep.
Well, now you've got $300,000. My question, you had left in the fund, I'm assuming you're going to probably spend that remaining $300,000. If that occurs, what, we then have, we can't, we don't meet the need, what occurs then? What's the impact of that?
Well, it's a function about, that's a federal fund, right? What page were you on, I'm sorry?
I'm on page six of your budget notes.
Okay.
It said HUD was short-funding the HAP, Needs of Housing Authorities, starting in 2009.
That's right. So not enough money coming out, and so housing authorities weren't able to use their full voucher capacity. And they just, that whatever money there is, or whatever vouchers are, however many vouchers can't be utilized, they just sit on the sideline until either more money comes or rents go down. So they're not used at all. Right now, we have 250 vouchers that we can't use at all because we don't have the resources, because the rents have gone so high up.
Okay, so in other words, you're authorized to do two, whatever the number is, 3,000?
Yes.
Can only fund 2,750.
You can only fund what you can fund with the money, yeah.
Okay, and then right down the page, there again under voucher administration fees, you say that the reductions have affected the voucher program operations and the ability to pay central office fees supporting the agency operations, but that there's a new method that you, it remains to be seen if that's going to work. What's the new method?
Well, almost every year HUD's trying something different with the admin fees that we earn for, say, for a voucher holder. Every client we serve with federal funds, we get a fee. So that administrative one, really, in HUD's mind, is they're reducing our admin fees. We've got that contained in our budget, even if they went lower. We're always budgeting to the lowest denominator, if you will, and are really happy when we see that we have more than what HUD may have allocated.
Okay, so just, so when you're doing this process and working with your clients, you're sort of right now, since you don't even know how much you're going to get, right? I mean, you don't know the actual number yet, then you're going from last year and saying, let's say it was 2,700 vouchers, and you're starting down the road there. At some point, you start slowing down, or, I mean, if you have 2,700 people already using vouchers at the end of this fiscal year, do you start funding them? And then if you don't get enough money, some people get bumped off? I mean, how's that work?
No, we're utilizing, we, the voucher program runs with the calendar, so we still have three more months of...
What calendar year?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And so there were some shortfalls, yes, but nothing that's going to stop us from serving the current 2,800 folks that we have.
One final question, because it's a unique budgeting number. Under, on page 11, this number, item 15, under expenditures, you've got housing assistant payment reserves, and you've got a negative $72,000 in there.
Housing assistance. Oh, I see.
And I'm just wondering how you budget a negative $72,000 expense?
Well, we have to account even if it's not, and so this is just the fact that that reserve, or that housing payment reserves for, all right, that all of the housing payments will be utilized during this next year.
And we'll have a loss of 72,000 comes out of reserves, is that what?
Comes out of reserves, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. I don't know what you're called, the Chair McCoyd, or His Honor?
Yes, you remember that.
Okay, His Honor McCoyd. I had some other questions, and he asked most of them, but I do have a question on page nine. Interest income of $40. You know, it seems to me like you're running hundreds of thousands, if not actually millions of dollars, through your accounts every year, and we can only earn $40 in interest?
Estimated interest income earned on reserves held by the authorities' various programs. They're all HUD programs, and they really don't let you do anything.
Okay, they keep the money if there is...
They do, that's right.
Okay, all right, thanks.
In other words, they make the interest.
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to approve the budget, it's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. The only other thing we have under information reports is the program management report. Anything special report on there, Andy?
Well, there was one article that I put in there that is maybe a little timely, or a little past its time, but in the business profile, I put in some information from Washington DC Policy Update as it related to some monies that we already have, that HUD's already peeled back because of the, I think because they're trying to get more money for some of the catastrophes or other big priority projects. And so we lost point, and this might not sound like much, but 0.6791 percent. What that means to us is about $25,000, right? So I don't know that this is going to be the beginning, but we certainly expect that there's going to be a long arm reaching in and trying to pull back. And I don't know where the sideboards are, the sideboards are to, and who might stop that, if anybody.
Okay, any other questions, Fred? Well, we appreciate the work you're doing with the scarce resources. We know you're doing a great job in making it stretch as much as you can for the folks in our, in our city that need the help. So thanks for your work and that of your staff.
Thank you.
With that, the Housing Authority of the City of Salem is adjourned.
Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for September 25, 2017 to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kaiser?
President.
Board Member Anderson?
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoyd?
Here.
Board Member Asik?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
Board Member Lewis is absent, and guest councilor McClintock is sitting in. And Chair Bennett?
Here. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we don't.
No reports from boards, commissions, or committees?
No public comments.
And no public comment. Is there anyone that wants to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Councilor McCoyd, the consent calendar?
I move approval of consent calendar.
Second. You want to go over what's up?
And the item on the consent calendar is basically a proven exception to the required applicant match included in the North Gateway Urban Renewal Grant Program to facilitate the use of an existing $2 million grant for the C-Tech Career Technical Education something located on Portland Road in that North Gate area.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Oh, and any, did you have a report? Nothing? Okay. The Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, September 25, 2017 to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Councilor Kaiser?
President.
Councilor Anderson?
Here.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor McCoyd?
Here.
Councilor Anderson?
I'll have to go here, I'm here twice. It's me and my other person.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
They both start with a.
Councilor Asik?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Cook?
Here.
Councilor Lewis is absent, and in his place is, speaking in, is Councilor McClintock, is Councilor, and Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Councilor McCoyd, additions and deletions?
We have no additions, they're deletions to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, this is an opportunity for the city council and city manager to comment on your work, or whatever you've been up to. Now, I know all of us went bicycle riding on Saturday. Councilor Hoy, tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Salem Open Streets event happened on Saturday, and I thought it was a great event where I think five of us were present and cycling throughout the Maple...
Winter.
Winter, Maple, what's that, Maple Winter Bike Way?
Winter, yeah.
Yeah, Maple and Winter Bike Way. Had a great time, saw Councilor Anderson in spandex, which was not the highlight of the day, but we all got through it.
That's a moment, isn't it?
It was a moment, it was a moment. And we all got through it, though. And I think it was a great event, and the organizers just did a fantastic job, and it was a really nice way to experience the city in a way that you don't always get a chance to do.
Really want to call out Angela O'Bry for the work she continues to do on this project of the...
Bicycle Boulevard.
Bicycle Boulevard, yeah. Go ahead, Councilor.
Just to add an addendum to Councilor Hoy's comments, it was actually six because Councilor Asik was there, well, not on two wheels, but with two quadrupeds in tow, so...
We walk rather than bike. Takes a little longer.
But it was great to see so much out there in the community.
Well, I had the chance to help kick off the Micronesian Islander Community Celebration at Riverfront Park this weekend. It's the second year, which meant there were a lot more people present. It was a really, really great, colorful event, very enjoyable, the weather was nice, so... Okay, anyone else? Councilor Nanki?
Just the Northwest Natural Get Ready Salem took place, and I rode my bike over there after we finished the other piece, and just want to thank them for helping try to get Salem citizens ready and for our public safety folks that are out there. If you ever, next year, you could go and climb around in a SWAT vehicle, so.
Wow.
Have to wait a year now, but they always do a great job, and a lot of the information's online, because we will have to deal with Cascadia someday. Whether or not that's in my lifetime, I don't know, nor does anyone else, so be prepared.
Okay, great. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I wanted to mention to the council and also to the public listening this evening that I did not recognize prior to the publication of the council agenda. On page seven, there's a list of upcoming public hearings. We have within the Statesman Journal published notification of a public hearing on our solid waste rates. We conduct a cost of service analysis in conjunction with our franchised haulers and the data that they provide to us and a consultant who helps us determine what and if increase may be necessary. And we'll be coming with that at the upcoming meeting on October 9. The meeting begins at 6:00 PM, and we will use our channels of communication to make sure the word gets out to the public about that.
Okay. So it's on increased garbage rates, is what you're...
That is correct.
Okay.
Or not increased.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Well, that's all I've got for comments. We'll move on then to proclamations. I have a proclamation for Walk or Bike to School Day, and want to invite up Tonya Johnson, Kaylee Westerman, Hersh Sangster, and Vic Lippard. Tonya is the OSU Extension Services Representative. Kaylee is the Marion County, was with Marion County and a former intern with OSU Extension Services. Hersh is with the Salem Bicycle Club. And is Vic with you?
Right here.
Vic Lippard is the bus router with Salem Kaiser School District, which may give you an idea of what we're going to be talking about. Whereas the City of Salem makes pedestrian safety a priority for all, and whereas an important role of parents and caregivers is to teach children pedestrian safety and help them to develop positive habits that contribute to lifelong wellness, and whereas physical activity is a vital component in efforts that help to prevent childhood obesity, diabetes, and other health challenges faced by children, adults alike, and whereas children walking or riding a bike to school provide opportunities to build activity into their daily routine, and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk or bike to school and evaluate walking and biking conditions along the way. And therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 4. Mark your calendars. It's Wednesday, October 4, as Walk and Bike to School Day, and invite everyone in the community to join me in observing this event by walking or biking with a child to school, thereby supporting efforts to instill greater health and safety for Salem's youth. And here's a copy of the proclamation. Whoever is taking proclamations tonight. Thank you very much, this is a really, and thank you, Councilor Cook, for your helping us celebrate this. This is really, as we know from news stories, from our own experiences, this is extremely important for kids to get used to this, and I'm just really pleased we were able to assist in this. Did any of you want to say anything?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I'm Kaylee Westerman. Like he mentioned, I work with Marion County, but I also have the pleasure of being the lead coordinator for the Open Streets Salem event, that was forementioned. It was a hugely successful event, and thank you all for attending. We did have about 50 people show up, two bike with the mayor and council people, so that was a really big success as a kickoff to the event. But really, it just showed the enthusiasm and the excitement around walking and biking in forms of active transportation in the City of Salem. And I've also had the opportunity to work at a number of schools in the Salem Kaiser School District. I know how important this is to a lot of families and a lot of people who, where walking and biking is the main form of transportation. But for other students, it's the opportunity to connect with other peers, to get another form of activity in their lifestyles, and to decrease the amount of obesity in our schools, as well as addressing safety and equity in our schools, too. But I do know the excitement and just around walking and biking is increasing in Salem, and thank you for recognizing this proclamation, and I look forward to seeing everyone out walking and biking on that day.
Hersh?
As President of the Salem Bike Club, we're quite, have been quite active in doing bike skills fairs at all the schools, and those things are just wonderful, and this helps that quite a bit. We'll even do even more next year, and thank you, thank you, thank you for all that are involved in bike education and safety.
And we just want to thank you for supporting this in our community, and know that environments that support walking and biking get people out and help them be safe and healthy and active, and establishing habits young will get with them for the rest of their lives. So thank you for supporting, and please, we encourage you all to go out and walk and bike to school and work on October 4. Thank you.
Thank you very much. From Center 50 Plus on age-friendly.
I'm Marilyn Daly, and I am the manager of Center 50 Plus. And this year, the Center 50 Plus Advisory Commission has added to their annual work plan to facilitate community conversations surrounding quality of life for Salem's older adults. AARP and the World Health Foundation have provided us an evaluation tool... AARP and the World Health Foundation have provided us an evaluation tool and a checklist to guide these conversations. The first planning team meeting is set for tomorrow at 3:30 at Center 50 Plus, where 40 different community members and agency partners have volunteered to look at Salem and find ways to better support our older adults and allow them to stay in their homes and this community for their lifetime, with this end goal to be recognized as an age-friendly community. This evening, Bandana Shreshtha from AARP Oregon is here to acknowledge and recognize these future efforts, and I want to thank Bandana for being here this evening.
Thank you, Marilyn. I did prepare my notes, so I'm going to use that, and I also want to say thank you for pronouncing my name so well. Sometimes it's a problem because it looks different, but I just want to take a few minutes to, before the presentation, just say a few words about the Age Friendly Network and what this effort that with Marilyn's leadership and with Mayor Bennett's support means for possibly for all residents of Salem. On behalf of ARP, it's my pleasure and privilege to welcome the city of Salem to the National Network of Age Friendly Communities, because on embarking on this process, essentially, you are joining a network of 186 other cities, counties, towns across the United States and four other communities across the state of Oregon who have committed to doing the same process of assessment and review of where your community stands in terms of its age-friendliness, in terms of how people can continue to live in this community and thrive regardless of age or ability. And as the U.S. population ages and people stay healthy and active longer, communities must adapt. What we know is that our communities are not ready. The primary driver for looking at something like an age-friendly community is that our communities are rapidly urbanizing but also aging at a rapid pace. Today, we have one in every eight people... Persons who are people 65-plus, but in a few years, within the next 10 to 15 years, it'll be one in five. And so what is our community doing? This is a good chance to do that. Being part of the Age Friendly Network does not mean that you are committing to making Salem a retirement community or, you know, just focusing on only older adults. It really means that you are working to make the community a great place for people of all ages. Membership in the network is not an endorsement by ARP. What it does mean is that your community's leadership has made the commitment to actively work towards making the community an age-friendly place, a place for all people and all abilities. As Marilyn already mentioned, the World Health Organization is behind this framework and of age-friendly communities and helps us really kind of give... Gives us a framework to think about how people can be active throughout their life course regardless of their age, and as age-friendly communities go... Communities focus on both built and social environments, and that includes aid domains: housing, which we heard about today, transportation, which we also heard already about today, but also outdoor spaces and buildings, social participation, respect and inclusion, communication and information, health and community support, employment, civic engagement, and volunteering. So Salem is the nearest age-friendly community in Oregon, and it's already... You are already well on your way, but I think this one-year-long process will really help you figure out what the next steps are, and I'm... It's my pleasure to just provide... To present this network certificate to the mayor today, so I'm gonna...
Let's put this down. Marilyn?
All right. Photo op.
And I did mention that there is a... I forgot to mention, but we have a new publication that was produced by AARP. It has 100 different practices from around the country, from cities and communities, and we have enough copies. Marilyn will be distributing them to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, this is a project that I'm very interested in, and it's not a conflict of interest. I am. But I really, I think this is very exciting, and I had a chance to go view the movie that was put on the other evening and talk with the group briefly. This is a project I think everyone in the community can really get excited about and interested in. As you point out, one in five of us will pass that magic 65th birthday. I know. It's coming. So I think it's a real opportunity for us to get ready. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. I want to remind everyone that Young Sheldon is on tonight, so each of you will get three minutes. We will... I know. Only Hoy and I are excited about this, apparently. But you each get three minutes. The light goes on at orange at... You have one minute left. When the light goes red, please just stop talking so I don't have to interrupt you. It always seems rude to me, but we'll do it. So we're going to begin with Miki Kapialani.
Hello, Mayor Bennett.
Hello.
And councilors. My name is Kapialani Miki, and I'm here to testify to support the resolutions of the city of Salem committing to become a child-friendly city. Safety is very important to all children who lives in the city, especially the hearing-in-bear. I live at the Ford Ward. Where we live, I have a hearing-in-bear daughter, and I went where we live, and I asked them if they could put up sign for... Because there is cars that they come in, like speeding up, and sometimes she likes to go walk around the neighborhood, and when I asked the office if they could put up signs for just to be aware that there is hearing-in-bear, and they said no, because I'm the only one with that daughter. And so it makes me feel like she's not safe, and she have to stay home, and or we have to take her to a park, safe place. So that's one thing that I'm really asking for. I know that if the city of Salem become a child-friendly city, it's going to be more safe to our children. One more thing is transportation. I know buses very limited in Salem on only weekdays, and weekends, some family like us, we don't have transportation. We depend on the buses, and weekends, my kids, they go for... Like they join the football, the youth actions, and most of their games are on Saturdays. So please, if you guys consider the city of Salem to become a child-friendly city, maybe it will be easier for us, those parents that we are very limited to other things, to maybe that way it will have a creative back on how we can get more transportation on the weekends so that our kids can go out there and, you know, join there instead of just depending on other families. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miki. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Star Miki.
Hello, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Star Miki. I am a seventh grader at Judson Middle School. I live in Ward Four, Councilor Steve McCoy's area, and I am here to testify in support of the resolution for the city of Salem to become a child-friendly city. This resolution is important to me because I want all kids to explore and have fun without feeling unsafe or discriminated. For example, when I was in fourth grade, my neighbor and I loved playing outside together until one day she told me that her parents didn't want us to play together anymore because of my skin color. Since then, I felt unsafe and worried that my other friends' families might think the same way. With this experience, I ask for you to be... Please vote for the city of Salem to become a child-friendly city.
Thank you, Star. Sorry... Really sorry about the experience you've had. That's terrible. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much for coming down. It's important that people of your age come down and testify about the child-friendly city, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Isaac, Miki.
Hello, Mayor Bennett and councilors. I am an eighth grader at Judson Middle School. I live in Ward Four, Councilor Steve McCoy's area. I am here to testify the resolution, city of Salem committing to become a child-friendly city. The resolution is important to me because I believe children can be successful in life and/or make an impact on the world, but kids are being forced to stay inside because of the unsafe environment outside. This can ruin their future and set them off course in their path to success. But if you vote for the city of Salem to become a child-friendly city, you can help kids live on... Live in a safe environment and set them on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac. Well, the Mikes pointed out something I did forget to mention. We would like to have you all identify either your ward or address, if you would, please. Thank you for doing that. Sam Claussen?
Mayor Bennett, city council members, my name is Sam Claussen, and I'm sorry, Mayor Bennett, you wanted us to also say our address?
Either your address or your ward.
My ward is Five.
Okay.
From Ward Five. And I'm here to offer my comments on the Sit-Lie Ordinance. So I've lived in Salem-Kaiser my entire life. I'm the wife of a downtown business owner and the daughter of a former city counselor of Kaiser. I'm currently a first-year law student over at Willamette, and I've spent my last six years in Oregon politics, primarily focusing on economic development. As a person who depends on the financial success of downtown business activity through my husband's business, I genuinely appreciate that my city wants to make downtown more safe and livable. I have, in the last few years, seen our downtown grow and flourish into the kind of place that I want to build my career and raise my family in, and I have, in that time, begun to call myself a Salem evangelical, touting the good news of the progress of my city. But to hear that my city is considering a proposal that targets and dehumanizes the most vulnerable part of our population is gut-wrenching. I want to be proud of where I live, but for the first time in my life, I'm embarrassed by the reputation my city is building.
Any questions for Sam?
Sorry, I have one more part.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you during the...
I also want to speak on behalf of myself as a law student. I'm only five weeks in, but in one of our recent criminal law cases, we read a case where LA passed a law that criminalized sleeping in cars. The intent was to prevent homeless individuals from camping in unpermitted areas, but the result was an invitation for law enforcement to discriminate against the poor and needy. Luckily, the law was deemed unconstitutional, but our class was still saddened by this event talking about it for weeks. This case felt like a historic discriminatory event of the past, and only a few weeks after reading this case, this past became a present and in my community. Please don't let this be my future. Please vote no, or please at least allow public testimony, because I know there are a lot of people that want to speak on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Dale Hendrick?
Hi, thank you, Mayor, city council. My ward is Ward Three, and I'm here, as well as Sam, to protest the ordinance against homeless folks. This policy does not make moral or fiscal sense. I've lived in Salem my entire life, and just as walking in, I noticed something that I haven't noticed, the rainbow banners that say shalom and peace and other things in different languages, and this ordinance doesn't make any sense when I compare this to that, those banners. And I did just a simple Google search and came up with a few sources about supportive housing, supportive issues to deal with homelessness, and I was just wondering if, you know, we addressed any other solutions before going straight to this. This is a discriminatory, anti-homeless, anti-veteran policy. Many homeless folks are people of color, LGBTQ people, and in general, it's an anti-human ordinance. I want people to be welcome here, and this does not do that. You know, it's an... It's couched in the language of public safety, and in reality, this ordinance is an attempt to sweep the serious issue of homelessness just under the rug. The next thing I can see happening is spikes outside of buildings, stopping people from just sitting there for any reason. This is a heartless waste of our resources as a city, and I think it could ruin the law enforcement's relationship with the homeless community in general. This is not a solution that I would support. While I'm not saying that supportive housing is the perfect solution, I think we need to be looking in that direction, and because those supportive housing options, they've shown that in some cases, they can be cheaper than having to police, jail, and in general, just enforce these types of ordinances. So I would just please urge city councilors to vote no and to include more public comment on the issue.
Counselor McCoy?
I think... This isn't really a question, but I want the folks to know here that the city council here is working with... On the homeless issue. In our budget this year, we've budgeted almost $2.5 million to... Between staff time and actual funds to reach out and work with the homeless, to get them housing first, and then get them in all the programs they need to move their way out of housing. So it's not like we're blind to what's going on here, and... But we do get complaints. There's complaints, and this is a proposal from staff that we've just seen about the same time you have, and probably going to have a hearing on it, but there are issues downtown with merchants and other folks that don't agree with you that do think we should do something about it. So I just want you to know that. We're conscious of what's going on here. This is a... This is an issue that's going to take quite a bit of dialogue, but we are aware of the homeless issue. We're working on it on a long-term basis, and our goal would be to get everybody housed and off the street, if we could.
Thank you, Counselor. I look forward to having more opportunities to discuss the issue at a council meeting instead of it ending this evening.
Thank you very much. Caleb Hayes?
Hi there. My name is Caleb Hayes, and I live in Ward Two. First, I'd like to thank the city council for recognizing the homelessness issue, although I believe the sidewalk ordinance is the wrong approach. Whether you fall on the right or left side of the political spectrum, there are many reasons to call for a different approach than the one being considered in the ordinance before the council now. For those maybe most red-blooded members of the right wing, more government intrusion in our lives is never something appreciated, nor is wasted government resources on hastily-developed policy that leads to litigation tying up taxpayer dollars and resources in courts over constitutional issues. To be clear, I believe this proposal would be challenged in the courts based on the fact that similar ordinances have been challenged throughout the state. Why waste taxpayer resources on an issue negatively impacting so few? Why not develop smarter policy that focuses on solutions to homelessness at low-cost taxpayers rather than lengthy litigation over abandoned... taxpayers rather than lengthy litigation over a band-aid policy solution? Those on the left don't like wasted taxpayer dollars either, but maybe more upsetting for them, government not actually wielding its power to solve the policy issues of the day. Instead, it would seem the city of Salem is carrying out a policy that infringes on the rights of those who have leased in our society, a prospect dreaded by those on the left. Let's not forget our friends over at the Civil Libertarian folks at the ACLU, the folks of all political stripes that have defended folks who you may or may not agree with on issues that matter most. The ACLU is also against this policy. So what's the right approach? It's incredibly simple, housing first, and I think some of you already get that. One, let's not dismiss this as a radical concept, though. Please, please consider that many municipalities are having success with this approach. In fact, homeless advocates from across the country are starting to agree that housing first is the most humane and cost-friendly approach for the taxpayer, and it considers the concerns of both the political right and the left, concerns about wasted taxpayer dollars on the right and ineffective policy from the left. It appears to be working in places like Utah and Denver, too. A recent literature review of the housing-first concept took into account findings from 34 studies on the issue, and their conclusion can be summed up simply. While our review cast doubt on whether housing-first programs can be expected to pay for themselves entirely, the certainty of significant cost offsets combined with their benefits for participants means they represent a more efficient allocation of resources than traditional services. Please put this ordinance on the backburner until the city puts, takes its gloves off to create real solutions on the issues of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. And Caleb, just to set your mind at ease, that is our policy, is housing first, and that's what we're pursuing actively.
We're doing it right.
Okay, good. Thank you. Tanya Hunt?
My name is Tanya Hunt, and I live in Clackamas County. I'm here representing Children First for Oregon, statewide organization that inspires and equips communities to advocate for kids. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the Child Friendly City Resolution and to state my support and my excitement over this opportunity that Salem has to really be a statewide leader in this important movement that we've seen. Oregon is now ranked 31st amongst all states in the nation for child well-being. That's down dramatically in the last 10 years. So we continue to see deep and complex problems for kids in our state and in our communities. Child poverty remains stagnant despite the economic recovery. Our foster care program is inarguably in crisis, and our high school dropout rate is one of the highest in the nation. So what's it going to take to change these things? I would love to say it's going to take children's advocates like me, but it's not. It's not going to take state government alone. It's not going to take our federal government, certainly, alone. It really is going to take communities, individual communities, one by one, taking the time, the initiative, the commit- making the commitment to focus on the well-being of our kids. And I believe that Salem has the opportunity to be a model city in this area through the consideration and passage of this resolution. As Children First for Oregon begins an intentional 18-month process of reaching out to communities across the state, we will be asking communities, what are your concerns? What are your hopes? What are your, your aspirations for kids? With the end goal that we will inspire conversations, conversations that have already begun here. And I'm so excited to take across this state the fact that Salem is ahead of every other city in our state in making itself a child-friendly city. So I commend you for, for giving this serious consideration, and I look forward to hopefully sharing good news across Oregon about your actions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Patricia Stone Road. Following Patricia is Deborah Patterson. We can kind of start lining up. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Patricia Stone Road. I'm a certified law clerk with Willamette Law Clinic, and I'm a resident of Ward 7. The city of Salem currently does many positive things for the children in our community. We have amazing library programs, well-run youth sports and summer programs, a youth leadership summit, beautiful and nicely maintained parks and open spaces, and many family-focused special events held throughout the year. These programs, events, and spaces are utilized and enjoyed by our youngest citizens and provide a great head start towards Salem becoming a designated child-friendly city. A child-friendly city is one that declares its commitment to our most vulnerable citizens, our children. A child-friendly city actively solicits the opinions and participation of its children and their families. It is a city that reaches into every corner to facilitate and encourage participation from children of all color, of all faith, of all genders, and all income classes. Ultimately, a child-friendly city is one that recognizes that a city dedicated to the health and enrichment of its children is a more vibrant, more livable, healthier city for all of us. Dear council members, I ask you to vote tonight in favor of the Child Friendly City Resolution. By doing so, you will be sending the message that the city of Salem values its youngest citizens and is committed to their best interest. I ask you to vote tonight to show leadership in Oregon. Let's be the very first designated child-friendly city in the state. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Deborah Patterson, followed by Erin O'Reilly. Followed by Warren Binford.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Reverend Dr. Deborah Patterson. I live in Ward 7, well-represented by Councillor Cook. I'm an ordained clergy person serving in a congregational church in Canby, but I do live here in town, and I want to ask if you remember as a child trick-or-treating for UNICEF. I remember those little boxes, and instead of collecting candy, we collected pocket change to help kids around the world, kids helping kids. My kids did it, too, but about 10 years ago, we had to stop sending the kids door-to-door with UNICEF boxes because they would run into the occasional fanatic who would berate them and who thought that UNICEF was an international conspiracy to take over the United States. If we love our children, having child-friendly cities should be an easy, nonpartisan issue. Our cities are not very child-friendly. I always kept my kids close, and even now, I always want to know where they are. Do our parks seem safe to you? Can your kids just run and play? Are our schools safe places for kids just to be kids? I hear a lot of adults talk about the way it used to be, how they could get on their bikes and go downtown and thank heavens for this new bike initiative on October 4th. America was then a school for freedom and responsibility. This resolution aims to make our city a place where kids can experience freedom and learn responsibility again. It says kids have a right to safe schools, safe places to play, and safe homes in which to grow and develop, and a right to be heard and participate in the decisions that affect their lives. The resolution before you today is inspired by initiative, and an initiative of UNICEF, and based on the provisions of the UN Convention on the Rights of the Child. It was signed, the treaty, in 1995 by our U.S. Secretary of State Madeleine Albright then, but has never been sent to the U.S. Senate for ratification. We are signatory to it, but not yet a party to it. We're the only UN country not party to it. Ironic, we inspired it, but we have not ratified it. To read through the convention is to be reminded of what children throughout the world suffer today. They are trafficked for sex, forced to fight in wars, sold as slaves, and suffer from hunger and homelessness. These are not typically Salem issues. Ours are issues like only 13% of the kids biking to school, a city filled with lots of Starbucks and Dutch Bros, but you have a hard time to find a playground, public transportation that, public transportation that disappears every evening and weekend, streets where drivers drive far too fast, abysmal graduation rates, a city without a Parks Department, and children who have drowned in the river. I urge you to make Salem the first city in Oregon to step out and embrace the idea of becoming a child-friendly city. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Erin O'Reilly. We're not going to clap anymore. Erin O'Reilly, there you go.
My name is Erin O'Reilly, and I am a third-year law student at Willamette as well. I live in Ward 1. I think that those who have testified before me about the Child Friendly City Resolution have pretty much covered it, so I'm going to keep this really short and sweet. I am a law clerk at the Department of Justice in the Child Advocacy section, but I am speaking on my own behalf today. As a law clerk, what my job is, is to go through files for children that have been abused and neglected. I look through pictures, I look through doctors' reports, medical reports and all that, and I pull all that stuff out so that we are ready, the state is ready to go to trial on child abuse and neglect cases. So I see firsthand every day exactly what the children in Marion County, as well as counties all over Oregon, are going through as far as abuse and neglect. Adopting the resolution for a child-friendly city that has been set forth today is a good first step in helping to protect Salem's children, and then hopefully, by extension, all of Oregon's children. I would ask that the council adopt the resolution in order that children have the best possible outcomes. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Warren Binford, follow- Binford, pardon me, followed by Frances.
Mayor Bennett, honorable city council members, my name is Warren Binford, and I live in Ward 2 with my family. We've been Salem residents for 12 years. I'm a professor of law and director of the Clinical Law Program at Willamette University. My area of expertise is in international children's rights, and I was honored last year to be invited by Councilmember Cook to help craft the resolution that's before you tonight in support of Salem becoming Oregon's first child-friendly city. As they say, many hands make work light, and Willamette students, both undergraduate and law students, volunteered to step forward in support of helping to craft this initiative. City Councilmember Tom Anderson, City Manager Steve Powers, City Attorney Dan Atchison, and Gretchen Bennett, and our colleagues from the Human Rights and Relations Commission have all contributed in different ways to bringing the Child Friendly Cities Resolution before you tonight, and we're grateful to all of them for their contributions. So what would it mean for Salem to become a child-friendly city? Frankly, it means whatever we want it to mean. There are hundreds of cities around the world who have chosen to become child-friendly cities. Many of the countries where those cities are located have becau- have established accreditation networks that allow the cities to measure their eligibility and progress towards earning child-friendly city status. But currently, there's no accreditation system in the U.S., which means that we, here in Salem, can construct our own goals and measurements in demonstrating our progress towards becoming a more child-friendly city. I'm asking the city recorder to enter into the written record tonight a letter we sent to community partners this summer, as well as a previous draft of the Child Friendly City Resolution that provides some specific ideas on becoming a child-friendly city, such as viewing decisions and policies through a child-friendly lens, encouraging the participation of children and youth, and working with community partners, including schools, nonprofits, businesses, and the broader community, to achieve the best possible outcomes for our children here in Salem. But why should we become a child-friendly city? First, because we have a problem, and we need to acknowledge that problem, and we need to address it head-on. Seventy-six percent of the children in our school district are economically disadvantaged. Forty-two percent of our 11th graders do not meet the minimum expectations in math. Fifty-three percent of those 11th graders do not meet the minimum expectations in science. It's no surprise that 28% of our children are not graduating from high school. We owe it to our kids to provide a stronger economy and a better education. We also should adopt the resolution tonight to help us define who we are as a city and to help people decide whether or not they want to move to our community and join this, in this effort. Third, it allows us to provide leadership to the rest of the state. As Tanya Hunt of Children First Testified, First Oregon testified earlier, Salem is the first city in a statewide initiative to invite local governments to measure their success by the well-being of their community's children. As our state's capital city, it was fitting to start right here in our capital. Children First Oregon is not the only community partner that supports this resolution. So does the YMCA, Liberty House, the Gilbert House Children's Museum, the Salem Art Association, Marion Pope Food Chair, Children's Educational Theater, and more. In closing, I thank you for your time tonight, as well as during the last nine months, as we have worked towards bringing tonight's resolution before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Binford. Thank you for your work on this project. Is there any question? No. Frances Binford.
Hello, my name is Frances Binford Ross. I am a second, I live in Ward 2. I am a second grader at Heritage School. My friend Sean Urban was going to speak tonight, but he is sick. I would like to read his speech. Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, my name is Sean Urban, and I am a seventh grader at Heritage School. I am the future of Salem, and I'd like to testify in support of the child-friendly resolution. I have lived in Salem for my whole life, and I am grateful for lots of parks where kids can be outside, lots of playgrounds where kids can play, lots of hospitals, lots of schools to educate my generation. I like traveling to other countries with my family. I like meeting other people. Despite other interesting things that they do have, sometimes other countries don't have parks, are dirty, are smoggy and polluted, have unsafe conditions. I want to make Salem the best city possible. Think that we can do that, and just listening to children will help. As children, we are learning current facts in school. Children have different perspectives than adults. It will always be helpful to get an opinion of people with different experience. I have a really good civics class in my school. I have learned about government. I would like to have a child city council, elected by children and with children on it. I would be willing to help you with that. I hope that this resolution gets passed. Thank you for hearing my speech.
Excellent. Good. (applause). Brett France.
I would have a free, a movement, so I would know in advance that I needed a chair.
There you go.
Or, so that I'm taller like the rest of you.
Lynda Byerly's going to follow you.
I'm here to alarm you. I'm here to seriously alarm you, because you are facing a tremendous, tremendous crisis tonight, and the answer to homelessness is not a nighttime curfew. It does not address the problem. It's just a tiny little nighttime patchwork. And if I recall, in all my years of business, customers walk around in the daytime, so a nighttime event doesn't help them at all. If you are demanding a change, then the change has to belong to all of us. I heard what you said. You have been working. You have all tried. You haven't tried something old-fashioned, and that is to involve the whole community. Staff cannot learn this business fast enough, nor can you inspire them, because we've got a community full of people that know exactly what to do. They don't have the power, and they need it back. And they need it back in little pieces, because everybody knows a little bit, because nobody has all the answers, but we all have some. So I feel sorry for the homeless in Salem. Some of them were your neighbors and mine. They're all Americans. They were once rich or poor. They have fallen apart from our traditional level of life and quality of life. So now winter is coming, and you have got to go fast. So number one, I would, if I were you, if I were king, I would say, stop it tonight. Don't have a hearing. You've heard enough, and you know the truth. Hearing more about this controversy only solves the night. And if I tell you what kind of attitude it is for the police to have to pick up people with nowhere to go, that all, and each and individual one has a story to tell, that's demoralizing, absolutely demoralizing. I know, and you know, that we have lots of groups knowing what to do and doing their part in a small way today. What we do- What we don't have is for you to give the kind of leadership and give up pretending that you have the solutions. They are not in this building. They are among many of us. Proof of the commitment that you can find money is that the Rotarians intend to raise over a million and a half to construct a year-round amphitheater, which will only be used in the summertime. So also, proof of city money downtown, we now have a mural on a shemecha, a parcade, and the original budget intention that I knew about, and it may be corrected, I don't know what was spent, the original budget was $50,000. Now let me tell you something, I was in retailing. I know I wasn't near the parcade, but I, my customers could care less what the artwork is.
Time's up, Britta.
I have three seconds, and here's what I'm going to say.
You had three minutes, and time's up.
Time's up. So I can't tell you that I invite you to truly take care of our people, our conscience. We need your leadership. Homelessness cannot be solved at City Hall. The people are ready, ask us to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Britta, for your good manners. Linda Byerly.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Byer, and I'm from Ward Seven.
I apologize, it looked different to me. Thank you.
Linda Byer. I'm from Ward Seven, and I just wanted to come up and say that I'm against the homelessness, taking them off the streets. I think what you have proposed is inhumane. They're people. They deserve our understanding, and they deserve our respect. They may be out there for many reasons. You know, as one old saying used to be, that it could be you, tomorrow it could be you out there. So instead of just trying to pick these folks up, and it sounds like what the plan is to be, is to pick them up, cite, or cite them, and then if they do it again, pick them up and take them, and then just keep returning the cycle round and round, and I think that that is a waste of our funds, and I think that, like this other lady said, there are more humane ways that we can not only help the downtown people, which I agree that most of the downtown is closed at night, to have a better life. I mean, whether they're veterans, or mentally ill people, or just people down on hard luck, they deserve to be treated humanely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miki Varney, followed by Susan Powers.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Miki Varney, and I live in Ward Eight, and I came here tonight to listen to the testimony and learn more about the motivation behind, and voice my opposition to the proposed ordinance to regulate the public use of sidewalks. I didn't prepare a bunch of, you know, a speech or whatever, but I just, I wanted to come in and express my concern about this. Also, on Saturday, I hadn't had the opportunity to listen to Jimmy Jones, who's the executive director of Arches, and I learned more about homelessness than I've learned in my whole life. He's wonderful. I did not realize the extent of the problem here, the speed of growth, the lack of current, of facilities and services to address it, but he did say affordable housing is a big key, and so it's wonderful. I really thank you for stepping up and looking at ways to provide more housing to address the issue. But one of the problems I see is with the rental market, the housing market we have here, where this problem is going to keep increasing, and we need to look at a lot of different aspects of it. You know, I mean, our economy is doing well for some of us, for others who are living paycheck to paycheck, working two jobs sometimes, that homelessness state, that abyss is getting closer and closer. I feel that this ordinance discriminates against homeless individuals, and, you know, sweeping a very vulnerable population under the rug behind a building, whatever, is unacceptable. We can do better. So I urge you not to support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Susan Powers, followed by Trevor Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Susan Powers. I live in Ward Seven. So my testimony this evening is as a resident, a mom, a nonprofit employee, and a citizen who believes there is tremendous long-term value in child-friendly cities. I am in full support of the city to move forward and commit to future planning and decision-making with the united vision that if you address the most vulnerable population, the children, then you are also addressing the needs that the city should be livable for all. The ultimate indicator of a child's well-being is a healthy environment and one that reflects a democratic society that governs with thoughtfulness and inclusion. My hope is to see our local government here in Salem take the initiative to work in collaboration and cooperation for a child-friendly city using the UNICEF guidelines. We must value our next generation. From prenatal through six years of age is a very vital time in establishing lifelong success. As the capital of Oregon, Salem is ideally positioned to be a leader and a positive role model for the entire state. As a historian once observed, everyday life consists of the little things one hardly notices in time and space. So these everyday happenings are often the things that are the least expensive to implement. A green space to play, zebra stripes to cross safely the street, community spaces to gather, but these all add up and provide engagement for the youth. And as I've lived here for a decade now, I have certainly seen the momentum gathering in this direction, whether it be the Minto Island Bridge, or bike-friendly lanes, or even bike-friendly boulevards, and so I think that we should just lasso that energy and move it forward and commit. So I just urge city leaders to continue to support and commit in creating a thriving city, to give children a voice in the public realm. In fact, the city of Salem used to have a youth commission, but it has since been eliminated. So that would be wonderful to bring back. Educating our youth with civic awareness being in Salem is ideal. So please adopt these guidelines set forth by UNICEF for the child-friendly city. Salem would distinguish itself as the first child-friendly city in Oregon, which has been restated many times this evening, and it would clearly send a positive message for the state and to all the other cities and towns who would be interested in following suit. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions? Dr. Phillips, followed by Michael Slater.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for hearing us and giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Trevor Phillips. I live in Ward Three. I've lived in Salem and worked in Salem for a little over nine years. I'm an emergency room physician, licensed in the state of Oregon, and board-certified in emergency medicine. I'm here primarily to speak in favor of the child-friendly city resolution and to ask for your support for that important resolution. I speak as both a physician and a father. My children were both born here in Salem and have lived here their entire lives. This is the only home that they've ever known. I think that in medicine, there's a saying, you know, kids are resilient, but kids aren't just little adults. We have to support them. I mean, while they are resilient, we have to invest in them to empower them, because that investment is our future. I'm also here, and this is difficult to talk about, I am here to forcefully advocate on behalf of this resolution, because some injuries aren't survivable, and the prevention and investment in our future that we do today can prevent outcomes that aren't survivable. So we see things in the emergency room that are, you know, somewhat sometimes unimaginable, and any loss of life is a tragedy. It is my strong professional and personal opinion that voting yes on the resolution before us tonight will save lives. It may be a bit of a breach of decorum, but I feel like I'm compelled to take additional time to speak out and against the proposal on the sidewalks ordinance. I feel like the tale of two cities, we're about to be the state leader in an amazing initiative to empower kids, and I strongly encourage to vote yes for that, but at the same time, please vote no, or, you know, let's end this discussion on the potential of sliding down a path, a slippery slope, towards a non-ideal society. It's not the fault of the homeless that they're homeless. You know, I can't be more eloquent than the words of City Councilor Chris Hoy. Criminalizing the human condition won't make it better. So please vote no for that, and vote yes for the best of what we represent for the kids' resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Slater, followed by Allison Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Michael Slater. I'm in Ward Seven. You've heard a great deal of testimony from residents already in support of our child-friendly initiative and against the Sit-Lie ordinance. I would hope that you consider that testimony very carefully and vote against the Sit-Lie ordinance and for the child-friendly resolution, and I'd just like to echo Trevor's comments of appreciation for Councilor Hoy's really very thoughtful remarks in opposition to the Sit-Lie ordinance. I thought that was really a great act of leadership. Thank you.
Allison Kelly, followed by Maria Monahan.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the council. I'm Allison Kelly, and I don't live in Salem anymore. I lived here for 20 years, but I'm currently serving as the CEO for Liberty House, which is the Child Abuse Assessment Center, serving Marion and Polk Counties. My husband and I lived, moved into Salem in 1988 and raised four children here, and I just want to compliment the mayor and the city council for having this on the agenda. I feel that Salem has a long history of making amazing investments to support children, youth, and families, and that really has set this city apart. You know, just look around us, the Riverfront Park, the Peter Courtney Bridge, the Carousel, the Crox Center, so many wonderful investments, and I do feel this resolution for child-friendly cities is right in line with that. I am here in my personal capacity, just in support of anything that will help children and youth and families to be safe and strong and successful, because that helps us to have a vibrant community. It is important to look at life from the viewpoint of a child for a lot of reasons. One very obvious reason is that they're just smaller, they're littler, they see things differently than we do, and hearing their voice can give us a lot of good perspective. It's really important to involve youth in civic leadership opportunities, and our Salem Area Chamber of Commerce sets an excellent example of doing that through their Leadership Youth Program. I really want to compliment also our police department here in Salem. They lean in in so many ways, and we're very grateful for that. Unfortunately, the very mission of the organization that I'm working for right now has as its mission responding to concerns of child abuse, neglect, trafficking, and we see so many things that you just wouldn't even want to imagine. We do have issues with those issues in our, in our city, just as we do around the world. In fact, the issues are so widespread that as an organization, Liberty House has really had to lean in over the last four years and double its impact. So we really want to reverse that trend. We want to get away from that and get to a place where our children, youth, and families are healthier. So with that, we, I support anything that will help our city to take children's issues into consideration as you make investments, set policies, make decisions, hold hearings. We can help our children and youth become great leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions? Maria Monahan, followed by Jocelyn Bibber. Nancy Baker-Craft, followed by Mike, I'm not going to say that right. Nide Williams? Nide.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm from Ward One, Kara's. My name is Nan Baker-Craft. There seems to be bleeding over between the Child Initiative and the Sit-Lie, though I thought I was on the Sit-Lie, but as long as I'm here, I'm going to say also that children are very important, and they're not necessarily grown up by the time they're 22. And when our young people get put into the jails in the city instead of getting mental health care, it is injurious to them, and that to me is also a child abuse issue. I'm here because I believe that a lot of us don't know what it's like to be homeless. I'm very fortunate to grow up in a home where I had a roof over my head. I purchased a home, and I had a degree by the time I was 21, and I moved to Salem in 1977. Through divorce and the difficult economy that there was, I found myself nearly homeless in 2009. My home had a value of over $300,000, but I couldn't sell it. I couldn't refinance it. I'd lost every dime of it. If it hadn't been having a lot of furniture inside to sell, I wouldn't have had a place to go. Fast forward to this year, my son has a great heart for homeless people. He takes people from the mission and brings them home to our house. He has brought into my life people whose stories are heartbreaking. People who have schizophrenia, and they get arrested, and then they lose their SSI, and then they have no money to be able to have housing, and because of their mental condition, they need help even to just go back and get ID so they can get back into their SSI. I've had to walk that route with people. If you have no ID, where do you start? You can go get your voter record, you can go get your police record, and you can go get your court record if anybody's in that position, and then, then you're going to go pay for birth certificate, and then you get to pay for ID, and how do you think you get a house if you have no ID? The barriers for the homeless are shocking once you get close to them. Another issue that they have to deal with is the fact that there is only one place mostly that you can go, which is the mission, and many, I'd say, every person I've talked to has broken some rule there, and they can't go to the mission, and that's why they're sleeping in the streets. Thank you very much. Oh, and my, my son's chicken died while I was waiting for the council to rule. A dog came 10 blocks from Lancaster and managed to kill my poor chicken. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Boy, I apologize. It looks like N-I-D-E Williams. Okay? Julie Eaton?
Oops, I'm sorry. Nick Williams. I'm Nide Williams.
Did you have penmanship in school?
Yeah, I failed it. I'm Nick Williams. I'm a resident of Ward Eight, and I serve as CEO for the Salem Chamber of Commerce, which is in Ward One. This afternoon, I made a little, I took a little trip downtown and talked to some folks in business, and just asked them what their experiences with, with our downtown homeless population looked like. In every circumstance, there was compassion and an overwhelming feeling that Salem can do a lot better than we're currently doing, but to not do anything is not acceptable. So with that, they asked what they could do in every circumstance. Are there any conversations I need to be part of? Is there anything I can do? And I said, yes. Come to the city council with, city council meeting with me this evening. It starts at 6:00. And they said, anything else? So, but the response is overwhelming, and I know that people care deeply about this, and Salem has this uncanny knack for solving problems in a way that is totally and completely out of the box. out of the box. And I know that our members, I know that people in our community are absolutely chomping at the bit to be able to step up and provide ideas, perspective, input, whatever it is that's necessary. So, I look forward to serving in whatever capacity this body deems worthy. And thank you for taking this into consideration and trying to do something. To do nothing is not acceptable. Thank you for trying to do something.
Thanks, Nick. That's Nick, right?
Yeah, well, you can call me Nide.
Julie?
Hello, Mayor and councilors. My name is Julie Eaton, and I am from Ward Three. And I just thank you for the opportunity to get up here and let you know that I strongly oppose the Sit-Li ordinance that's on the docket, I guess. So many people have already said so many things about it and hit all the points I wanted to hit, the unconstitutionality of it, the cruelty of it. And, you know, here we sit in Salem, right, you know, south of Portland, where the rents are going out of control. People are going to start coming here, and it's going to happen here. Somebody else who was up here testifying about the children's initiative, 76% of children in Salem are economically disadvantaged. Where do you think they might end up? You know, so we care so much about children now, but when they're growing up on the streets, we just want to put them in jail. I mean, that's inhumane, and it's unconscionable. One of the things that really motivated me to come down here was Councilor Hoy's words that I read on Facebook, criminalizing the human condition. Again, I can talk a lot about the money aspect of this. If this does pass, I'm pretty sure the ACLU is going to be sucking up some money from you guys, that you'll have to defend yourself, because these kinds of ordinances have been deemed unconstitutional in community after community. So, I would really hate the money that we could be spending on housing the houseless, spending on legal fees to defend something that we know from the get-go is unconstitutional and, more importantly to me, cruel. So, I'm really curious to know who the staff is that even brought this up. How do they get, how do you get that job? But, you know, if you spend any amount of time on Facebook, you can see the lack of compassion that seems to be in academic in our society. So, you know, Salem has a very unique opportunity right now to show that we're going to break with that lack of compassion. You know, people on the streets are, there's mental illness, there's drug addiction, which I don't believe drug addiction is a criminal justice issue, it's a mental health issue. And to kick these folks when they're already down, is that who we want to be? That's not who I want to be, and I don't want to live in a city that that's who we've chosen to be. And I really, really hope this ends tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joyce Judy. I am in Ward Five, Councilor Essex Ward. And I want to thank the mayor and the councilors for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to actually speak on a couple of things. One, I wanted to strongly support the comprehensive plan amendment for the NESCA Lansing Neighborhood Plan. This should be passed, and it should be passed without any changes by the Planning Commission, to my opinion. So, I'm offering that as one piece of my testimony. In addition, another thing that's very important, aside from the things that we've already been discussing, is the grant application for the Domestic Violence Response Team to Stop Violence Against Women Act grant application. This is hugely important to women who face violence, and many women are homeless as a result of the violence they face in their households. And to go on to speak just to the Sit-Li ordinance, I'm really angry about it. Given the council's strong support to assist the homeless with their strategic plan, it boggles my mind that staff would take it upon themselves to develop this ordinance without taking the pulse of the council on this issue. Clearly, this is a flawed ordinance and one the people of Salem are against. Please drop this ordinance and find a better solution that doesn't criminalize the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? No?
Nope. Okay. Is there anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to speak? Yeah, Pamela, you want to go? You're next.
I'm here.
You want to come on down and just get behind? Would that work okay for you? Hi.
Hi. Mayor, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Pamela Lyons Nelson, and Kara is my representative here. I've lived in Salem for over 40 years, and I've lived in the same house for almost all of that. And that's on 21st Street, 1145 21st Street, Northeast. I'm here to speak against Ordinance 2217, which I consider both inhumane and ineffective. Those are strong words. I know there are many, many in our community, though, that back me wholeheartedly with that. As a matter of fact, I have not heard anything other than sort of a hushed horror that this is even happening in our community. It's ineffective because it's been legally challenged over and over and over in recent times with pretty much the same result. It's not constitutional. Excuse me, I got a little excited there. And it's inhumane, because as one of the famous quotes from so many sources who essentially say the same thing is, that a society is judged by how we treat our most vulnerable. The homeless, the people on the streets, the street people, I don't care what we, how big we have to get this basket that I'm describing to contain all the people that offend the people who are walking down the street and claim fear for their safety when it's pretty clear that it just makes them uncomfortable and that they are acting with many preconceptions about who these people are. Are they truly dangerous? Are they truly a threat to us because they're living their life on the streets? I've worked with homeless people. I've worked with homeless people for years. I was a counselor for years, working with Oregon Health Plan, and many of those people, oh, no, look at that flashing orange light. Many of them were homeless and wouldn't tell me because they were afraid of discrimination, even in the counseling setting. But they were there because they were Salem residents who had fallen on hard times, medical problems had complicated their life, they'd been living in their cars because of domestic violence, and so many things like that. I know a man that I met this summer who was homeless for two years. He never could adjust to the life on the streets. He called me one day when, because I sometimes hire him to do things around my house, and he was in tears of rage and despair because he'd been attacked in Busch Park, which was his safe place. And he had walked night after night after night, all night long, because that was safer. That was safer than finding a place where he'd be moved along. You can't stop here. You can't be here. And then, what happened was during the day?
Pamela, really, I'm sorry.
Okay. We need a comprehensive, comprehensive, community-wide plan to deal with this, with homelessness in every aspect.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Walker. I'm in Ward Two, Tom Anderson's Ward. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, so I do have things written down. I may have to read some stuff up there. But I am a guardian and advocate for a couple people in the local area who have been homeless. One who is currently not homeless, has been in their own apartment, drug and alcohol-free now for about, going on two years. My opinions of the Sit-Li issue is that it's just plain wrong. I just shake my head when I read it in the paper, when I read it online. I just can't even believe it's something that would be considered. I am an advocate for one of the 100 people chosen who are part of the city council, various agencies to put into housing, a person who has mental illness, medical problems, has been homeless for close to three years, who I met about a month ago. It's a great program. However, estimates are that there's approximately 2,400 other people homeless in the Salem Go to any city park at any given evening, you will see people moving into the parks. A lot of times during the day, they're already there, women with children, living in vehicles and bushes with no restrooms, showers, kitchens, beds. The city can no longer depend on the Gospel Mission Salvation Army, Community Action, Northwest Human Services to take care of all these problems. They're overwhelmed. The whole system is overwhelmed with so many. And with rents going up, it's just increasing every day. Out of sight, out of mind does not make the problem go away. Most other cities in Oregon and the Northwest have approved areas for homeless camping and tiny homes. For some reason, Salem refuses. I don't understand that either. They've been very successful in Eugene, Seattle, various areas. This is not a business versus homeless issue. It's not a Chamber of Commerce versus homeless. Many of the homeless have great mental health needs, addiction, medical needs, and much more. They are all someone's loved one, brother, sister, niece, nephew, father, parent. Salem can do better than this. We need to come up with more ideas and do something that's really going to help not put the problem where people can't see it.
Point of order. I think I'm speaking out of turn. I signed up to speak on a subject that's not on the agenda.
You are out of turn. I apologize. If you'll sit down, we'll call you up in turn.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Kari Elmore. I live in Ward One. I actually grew up in Salem and went away for about 10 years and came back voluntarily. So, I'm now a law student at Willamette, and I have been providing some support on this child-friendly cities initiative. I'm getting a good feeling about where it's going, though, so I'd like to focus a little bit more on the homeless Sit-Li ordinance that is at the table. I'm a little more concerned about where that's going. And speaking as the president of Willamette's National Lawyers Guild and vice president of the Multicultural Law Student Association, I would really like to make this connection between the child-friendly cities ordinance and the Sit-Li initiative. As others have mentioned, children are homeless as well, and if we're going to move on this child-friendly cities initiative, then we need to take into account all children. This proposed ban is inhumane, and as, again, others have mentioned, it is really only a matter of time before it's found to be unconstitutional. So, let's not waste our time and resources on this. It's going to be ineffective. It's going to push homeless people away from resources. As some people who have a map or have walked around downtown might have noticed, that's where all of the homeless resources are. People are sleeping and lying on the sidewalks in a particular region, especially for a reason. Don't push them out. Don't make life harder. It's hard enough as it is. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Gordon Roth, Ward Five. I am a third-year law student at Willamette Law. And I was originally here to support my fellow students in their move for the child-friendly cities initiative. And you've heard the phrase, "I felt compelled to say something," and I think I finally understand what that feels like. Because sitting here, I felt compelled. You say, "Ordinance Bill 2217 to regulate the use of public sidewalks." It's such an innocuous name. But what it really is, is what everyone here tonight has called it. It's a Sit-Li ordinance. It's an anti-homeless ordinance. And it is worth, even for the dozenth time bringing up, that the homeless are us. They are the elderly, and we're an age-friendly city. They are children, and we hope to be a child-friendly city. They're veterans, they're disabled, they're mentally ill, they're victims of the opioid crisis, or just victims of bad luck. They're people that had a house a year ago and rents went up. My rent has gone up 25%, and they just can't afford to live anymore. The one thing they aren't is wealthy. And I think something that is maybe the most illuminating is that there's been one person who was here to speak in favor, and even that was a sort of a "something must be done" favor. And the phrase that was used was, "We'll do anything." Well, except that. And you see the passion of people, law students, community members, people who felt compelled to say something. They're here, and they're speaking because it means something to them. And what it means is that human lives and human beings have dignity, and that that is more important than aesthetics or profits. One of the few presidents that everyone can agree on in this country said, had a very useful phrase, which is "the better angels of our nature." And voting in favor of this ordinance will be a betrayal of the better angels of our nature. And perhaps the city council has taken steps and are taking steps to address this. But the fact that you're trying and failing doesn't mean that you have then permission to enact an ordinance that attacks and targets the most vulnerable among us. I urge you to vote no. I urge there to be no second reading. This should be unanimously voted down tonight. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, councilors. I'm Rebecca Larson. I'm from Ward Seven. And I wasn't also planning on speaking tonight, but I wanted to bring one more perspective in regards to the child-friendly cities and also how that relates to the resolution, the Sit resolution. So, first of all, I just wanted to bring another perspective. As a former teacher, both here, involved in education in Oregon and also in other cities, I just wanted to highlight the fact that I've worked other places, and I came back to Oregon. I'm from here. This is my community. And I came back here to make a difference in education, and now as a law student in the lives of children. And I urge you to take into account the lives of the most vulnerable and how, I don't want us to become like the other cities I've lived in. I've lived a lot of different places in Salem, and Oregon in general is a unique place to live. We value our community members in a lot of ways, but I also want to highlight that I don't like that we're seeing us not value other members of our society. The homeless are an at-risk group as well, just like the children that I'm speaking about that numerous- The homeless are an at-risk group as well, just like the children that I'm speaking about that numerous others have spoken about. So I just wanted to bring one more perspective. I know you've heard a lot of testimony. Thanks for listening to One More Voice. But yeah, just to think about the connection of, we say that we're for children and for the vulnerable, and then putting others at risk, criminalizing them. It doesn't make sense in a lot of different ways. So I urge you to vote for the Child Friendly Cities resolution and against the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Councils. My name is Audrey Shackel, and I live at 3491 Lake Vanessa Circle Northwest. So supposing that you do get rid of this resolution, the Sit-Lie resolution, what comes next? Well, I have a grandson who's eight, and not long ago, he and his little friend, I was taking to go to the Rock Box. And coming down across the bridge from West Salem, there were all these men standing around. Earlier that morning in church, I had helped my little grandson put some socks in a box that were going to be given to the homeless. And both of these little boys said, "Grandma, look at all those guys down there." And I said, "Boys, those are the guys who don't have any socks and don't have any homes and don't have any beds and don't have any toilets." Well, that was just the perfect thing for two little eight-year-olds who said, "Well, what do you do when you don't have a place to go to the toilet?" And one of them said, "Well, you can go behind a tree or you can go behind a bush." And the other one said, "Or you can go by a building." "No," the other one said, "that's against the law. You'll get arrested." So these little kids had a problem, and Grandma is just biting her tongue. And one says to the other, "Well, here's what you do. You pee in your pants." And the other one says, "Well, you know, when you pee in your pants, it's kind of warm." And then the conversation went like all little eight-year-old conversations. But council members and Mayor, if you do decide to get rid of this ordinance, there's one thing positive step you can take is to find a place for these people to go to the bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. For the record, my name is Kenneth Hetzel, and I live at 745 Harris Street Southeast. And Brad Nakey is my city councillor. We had a beautiful time at Open Streets. Thank you, Mayor, and Chris Hoy for riding your bicycles. I was there at the Seardy Market. I was at Grant School. I was at Highland. I drove by Broadway Commons. It's a wonderful event. We should continue that. I was at the strategic planning meeting. And it was a little disappointing. We had more refreshments than people. I only think 60 people. And we had a competing thing. The senior movie was across the street that night, too. And I missed it. I had two tickets for it. I couldn't go. So I hope to get on that advisory council for the 50-plus senior city. But Stacy, the Assistant City Manager, was nice enough to give Rock some of the excess cookies. Rock is Recovery Outreach Community Center, a drop-in center for homeless and people in recovery. Thank you for the proclamation naming September as National Recovery Month. And Hands Across the Bridge was beautiful. We had 500, 600 people. There'll be a video out pretty soon about it. Do not pass the Lansing-Neska Neighborhood Association Plan. It does not address the stormwater infrastructure. Our infrastructure is collapsing. There's several places on Mill Creek that have collapsed and are going to collapse. We need to look at that. We tried to go to Planning Me, and Gary Pullman's the Secretary of NESCA. And I had some videos they wouldn't allow me to show. I'm going back to the Planning Commission. We need to address that. I'm going to bring it up. Homeless, you know, I'm the NAMI rep here in town, National Rights for the Mentally Ill. Our group is going to close tomorrow and renting a four-bedroom, two-bath house to start a NAMI homeless shelter for women. I've agreed to put $1,000 of my teeth money for new teeth toward the down payment and the utility deposit. For $3,000, we can start housing for women tomorrow. And there's no reason to wait. We have the Park Aid. Why can't, if I rent the Park Aid space, why can't I let somebody sleep in it at night and be out of the rain? Be under on the second floor, out of the rain. Why can't we open the bathrooms? The damn bathroom right here is closed at night, and you can't poop if you're walking around town. You know, in all the bathrooms, Fairmont Hill, the Scan neighborhood, mans Fairmont Park and keeps it open and supplied with toilet paper. Why can't neighbors adopt a toilet or put a porta potty out so people with dignity can go to the bathroom? Why can't, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Ben Kessler, and I'm from all the wards. One of the things that I wanted to say is, last year during the snow, it was a six-day wait for everyone at the mission. So if you lost your home today, it would be six days, anyone here, six days until you could get shelter in that snow. And you have to be there every day at either 1 o'clock or 4 o'clock, or else you get put to the back of the line. So there's always people traveling. We were out almost every night serving hot potatoes and soup and the blankets that we could get donated. So there are people that want blankets, but the mission only has so many wool blankets. I remember one night, there was a guy about this tall, and it was pouring rain, and it was very cold. And he went into the mission to try to get help, and he got turned away. He was already soaking wet, and he had to go walk somewhere to try to find a place to sleep, soaking wet. So people try to find places to sleep, but, and I don't know who gave the order, but there's the new no trespassing signs that got put up all over town right during winter last year, or maybe it was after winter. But now, all the places that people like to sleep, where they're safe and there's lighting, are no longer available. And so spots are limited, but there's more people that are going to be out there this year. So with no blankets and less places to go, people are going to start dying like they were in Portland. No one died here last year, and that was a good thing. Another thing is, is people were sleeping at the Overflow Shelter. And all those people that are sleeping there, there'd be about 15 every night. And if they're huddled up in those blankets trying to stay warm, they're not out committing crimes. They're not out hurting people. Their only crime is them trying to survive. And so towards the end of the winter, the police started sweeping them out of there. And these are nice people with signs asking for work. So just keep in mind that it was a six-day wait at the mission, and that's unacceptable. And to sweep people, I mean, we were helping people in wheelchairs, grandmothers, all kinds of good people. Obviously, some people are using drugs, but I've also seen people quit cold turkey once they just had a garage to sleep in. So as long as, I mean, imagine staying up all night and then just trying to sit along the wall and then be pushed out. Another, there's a blind guy down, there's a blind guy downtown every day that's asking for money.
I know it's real important, but your time's up.
Are we just going to push him out, too?
Yeah. Okay?
I'm James Cox. I think I live in District Three, 2475 Broadway Northeast, number 68, at the Somerset Apartments. I've been there for about nine months. I also work full-time at the hospital and valet program there. I bike in every day, especially five, mostly five days a week, and I see the homeless on the roads between Somerset and Broadway, all the way to the hospital every morning when I go there. I made that trip pretty well every day for almost two years in the worst weather, some of which, before I got my bicycle some time ago, I walked that two miles every day for about three months till I was able to get decent transportation and then take the bus after that, once I got my job established. I've been out of work for two and a half years, even with eight years of school. Had been a general contractor, had been engineer for a short time at the City of Hillsborough, and a lab technician, off and on. And I saw the economy crash and take my $10,000 with me. I haven't been homeless, luckily, because I've always been creative and my family was still alive to support me. But as I've seen the decay of culture and the decay of decency relating to our own citizens, I'm a little bit concerned that maybe we're talking too much and not doing enough. As a general contractor, I nationally made geodesic domes rather inexpensively, and I've seen people use them either as sweat or living structures for some time. I see no reason why we, as generally creative, intelligent people, we couldn't create temporary shelters of housed people over short periods of time when the weather's bad. To me, it just seems like a matter of commitment to a solution and our humanity, to maintain our humanity in the presence of a obvious critical need for our own citizens and our people. And the failure to step up to the plate and saying, "By the way, I'm a sensible, creative human being. I want to care about my neighbors." That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm Jamie Brazington, and I'm here as a survivor of childhood homelessness. And I feel like the divide of these two things is silly. I'm also a mother. I have a four-year-old son who gets to enjoy the parks, but that's about it because we're limited by income. If you guys want homeless people to slap sleeping on the street, your option is to give them somewhere else to sleep or to expect them to not sleep, and that's not real. There are a lot of places in the city that are empty. They're not good enough for businesses, but they're good enough to sleep in, and they still are empty. Either they're empty half of the year because it's seasonal, or empty because whoever owns it just wants it to be empty. If you think that they are sleeping on the sidewalk for fun or because, you know, why not? I just don't want to pay rent, then I invite you to go spend the night tonight outside, sleep on a sidewalk, feel how cold it is, feel how hard it is. Understand that you're not sleeping there because it's comfortable. You're sleeping there because you haven't slept in so long that either you sleep or you end up in the hospital, and they aren't really going to be very nice to you at the hospital either. I think that thinking that homelessness is an adult issue is silly. A lot of my friends growing up were homeless, and not very many of them are alive anymore. I'm one of, myself and two others, that have survived it, and one of them is in jail because of mental illness. And a lot of these mental illnesses come from trauma that has happened during homelessness. Children are victims, particularly when they're homeless. And children are victims just because they're children, and it happens. Not everybody gets to have a safe space all the time. I'm sad to say that I will not let my four-year-old out of my sight at a public park for one second. I'm the only adult who's willing to play on the playground with the kids because I'm not letting my kid out of my sight. Because I've watched parents who go through the break in heart of a kid who's drowned or a kid who's gotten lost or a kid who's gotten taken. And I'm unwilling to go through that with my own. But there are a lot of people who seem to take for granted that their children are semi-safe. So I just, as somebody who's experienced the homelessness and the lack of safety, I say yes, definitely increase children's safety. And understand that homeless, that's not a choice. Don't kick them off the street just because they don't get a choice. That's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name's Pamela Watson, and I actually live in Marion County over off of Joseph, so I don't think I have a ward. But I spend, I work for the Salem Kaiser School District, and I'm also in favor of the child safety provision that we're talking about this evening. But I'm mainly here to speak out about the Sit-Lie ordinance. And as someone who has been actively involved in the homeless community in various ways for many years now, I totally find this inhumane, especially because there is no alternative being offered by the city. You cannot sit there and ask people who have no place to go and then tell them that they can't sit down or lie down and not offer something that's going to help them to have a place to stay during the day. Right now in our city, our agency's arches is, has a new building, but they're in the process of remodeling the room that will become eventually the day center. So that's, they are not providing a day center right now, so that leaves more of our homeless on the street. And Union Gospel Mission, I think for at least a year now, had, no longer opens their day room to the majority of men that are homeless unless they're involved in their program. So unlike the gentleman that was here earlier tonight, who said that Salem is known for thinking outside the box, I will say that I don't agree with that. As someone who's worked with Home Based Shelters of Salem, I've also been one of the original artapodies women way back when we first started coming here, speaking out on that. I don't find Salem willing to think outside the box. Other cities have provided alternatives to try to get people into transitional housing, just to get them off the street. The process that it takes for someone who's been homeless for years to go from homelessness to an apartment sets them up for failure unless they have a lot of mentoring. But if you can provide them a step, you know, stepping stone, perhaps, you know, from the camp to a tiny house village like Opportunity Village in Eugene, or even like Safe Spots in Eugene, where these people are able to gradually start re-accommodating what it's like to sit there and learn how to live and take responsibility and learn life skills. Your brain literally gets altered when you become homeless. You literally are just spending your time at the bottom rung of Maslow's hierarchy, just looking for safety, food, and shelter, period. Every day, that's the same thing over and over and over again. They never get to the next rung. So thinking outside the box on alternative ways that we can start offering, getting more of these people into something that we can begin that process and that transition for them is going to help our homeless population more. So I know we can do better, and the community is waiting. It's just that we're waiting for the city of Salem to say, "Yeah, we're behind this, too."
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on then to the consent calendar.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I move approval to consent calendar with the following poll. Item 3.2A by Counselor Anderson.
Second by Hoy. Go ahead.
Let me talk about it. I address what's in the consent calendar. We have the minutes from the September 9th council work session minutes. We have the minutes from the September 11th council meeting. Under action items, we've got authorizing the city manager to apply for federal transportation funding allocated by the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. It specifies three projects to be included in that. We've got authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept Critical Oregon Airport Relief Program grant funds to be used for the construction of Runway 13/31 rehabilitation. We've got an intergovernmental agreement that authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the housing authority of the city of Salem, provide administrative support and other services. Authority of the City of Salem, provide administrative support and other services for a fee for the fiscal year 2017-18. We've got authorization to authorize the city manager to apply for and accept grant funds from the Federal Stop Violence Against Women Grant Program, in the amount of up to $210,000, to help to support the city's domestic violence response team. And we finally, we've got another authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment to the IGA between Marion County and the City of Salem. That'd be an intergovernmental agreement extending the Salem Police Department's use of the District Attorney's Something Management System for an additional five years. And that is the consent calendar.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Okay, special orders of, oops, public hearing, sorry.
City Council will now hold, will now conduct a public hearing concerning the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward number. Individuals are limited to three minutes of testimony. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council members. My name is Shelley Ahinger, and I'm proud to represent the City of Salem as your Urban Development Federal Programs Manager. Before you tonight is the 2016-2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, in short, CAPER. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the city to report on the performance of the projects or programs that received Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds during the 2016-17 year. The Consolidated Annual Performance Report, and I'll refer to it as CAPER from this point forward, identifies the monies that we spent on projects for individuals in need and families earning 80% or less of the median family income in Salem. These needs are met by addressing economic development, homelessness, affordable housing, and revitalization of neighborhoods. Our report is reflective of projects completed during the second year of the five-year Consolidated Annual Plan. At the beginning of each fiscal year, the city prepares an annual action plan. That informs HUD and citizens what goals and objectives the city intends to meet with the CDBG and other funds in the upcoming year. At the end of the fiscal year, the city prepares this CAPER report. The actual accomplishments achieved are reflected in this report. The program year for the action plan included economic development, ending homelessness, and expanding affordable housing as the three goals for 2016-2017. This chart reflects some of the activities that were funded. And I know we're talking about dollars, $664,000, and we're talking about percentages, but we're really talking about individuals. And I think that is important in light of tonight's conversation that we've been having. These are individuals whom we've helped with these resources. Last July is when the program year began, and it ended June 30th of this year. The Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network housed 260 individuals with these resources. They make up part of that 43% homelessness portion. In addition to that, Congregations Helping People had the opportunity to work with families in a gap financing, which meant temporary subsistence payments for one-time activities. People who needed assistance with their utilities, and but for the utilities, they were not able to keep their housing, because you must meet housing quality standards. In addition to that, an example is a family where the parents, the head of household became ill. He lost his job, and the three children and the mom were, they were about to be evicted. Because we had this program available, they were able to go to Congregations Helping People. We did some gap monies so that they, their rent could be paid for a couple of months until he found another job. That prevented homelessness, and that's what these programs are designed to do. Economic development is another portion of what we've accomplished over this past year. And in looking at the economic development, we've helped people retain jobs, as well as trained people so that their skills would meet the need in the community. Here, we've broken down those goals that I discussed briefly. Where promote economic development, our goal was to have 52 businesses served. That means 52 businesses would be assisted, and these are small businesses, which then produce additional jobs and job opportunities for individuals, as well as 27 jobs created and retained. Our actual accomplishment was 40 businesses served and 22 jobs created or retained during that 12-month period. Our goal number two was ending homelessness, and once again, we outpaced ourselves by over 10%, which is reflective of the increased need of homelessness assistance in the city. So there were 282 persons was our goal to be served. We actually served 2,333 persons. And those are individuals, once again, who got rental assistance for up to two years. Individuals who were homeless, who are now receiving through the HRAP program that the city started, the security deposit was funded out of this program to the Housing Authority, and then the Housing Authority picked up them through the, for their long-term rent. So we are working in collaborations with one, collaborations with one another to make sure that we can meet some of the most vulnerable populations in the community. Goal number three was affordable housing. The city is not a developer, and we do not build housing. However, we do have wonderful partners out there, and you can see that we had targeted two home, two owner-occupied homes would be rehabbed, and we exceeded that to make that, for there to have been four homes. Those four homes were all in West Salem. They were with individuals who were modest income. I had the opportunity to meet one of the families, and it was a senior citizen who, but for us going in and redoing her roof, changing out her windows so it could be more energy efficient, as well as assisting with her with some other basic needs as far as making her walkway ADA compliant, then she would have had to move out of that home and would have had to find other housing options. She was very appreciative of the city reaching out and being of assistance to her. I want to mention two additional significant activities, and one is because it is, the home program is a consortium with the City of Kaiser. We work with them and persons in their community in providing services through the home program. As well as the 108 loan payment that was taken out for the Salem Convention Center Conference Center. The last payment into the reserve was made during this program year, so we'll have some additional funding next year that will not go towards this loan payment. So that's a significant achievement, and I will say the city is one of few places that never defaulted one month on any of its payments to the 108 loan program. Leverage funding, because we can't do it by ourselves. I think that's been stated on more than one occasion this evening. And so you can see that we're, $664,000 is what home and CDBG, the federal resources went in, and we leveraged those funds by 1.3 million. That's more than double what the federal government gave us. The federal government also provides a benchmark saying how much your match liability is, and that's only $61,000. We require all of our grantees to provide 25% match. It could be cash, but it can also be an in-kind contribution. And we had various contributions that made up that match. One was a private loan. Some were grants received from our local businesses and trusts, as well as weatherization funds. Lastly, I want to make sure that everyone understands this is not just about our agency or the city. We have partners who are doing this. We have individuals who apply for funds for specific uses that are in line with our goals of eradicating homelessness, economic development, as well as assisting families in other ways. The city contributed $400,000 in general fund, and these are the grantees who receive those to help with, address public service, case management for homeless individuals, as well as to provide subsistence payments. The CDBG program and home programs also had individuals who applied for those resources, and they're either in the process of building new housing, such as the Salem Housing Authority with Yoquena Hall, and/or in the process, or Shelley's House, who helped individuals who were previously incarcerated, who are now, women who are incarcerated, who are now working towards getting back into society, as well as Catholic Community Services Foundation and Jason Lee Manor, who are working with both seniors and families in assisting them in making sure that they can keep their housing. The next steps, after you've had an opportunity to maybe ask some questions tonight, and I can answer those for you, and we will then submit the CAPER to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for their review and their approval, and our submission due date is September the 30th. I'd also like to thank the whole Urban Development Department. I've only been there for a short period of time, but they've made me not only feel at home, but they've made it clear that homelessness and addressing housing is a priority of the city, and I'm happy to be a part of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no testimony. Is there anyone who wants to testify on this?
No.
On the CAPER? Okay? Okay, my question's stacked. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Shelley. We're glad to have you here, too. I have a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
It relates to the actual report. First is on page seven, which is the goals under the five-year plan. On almost all of those goals, but two, you seem to be right on schedule for your five-year plan. In other words, you're one-fifth of the way, or very close to that at the, you know, after one year. But in the expand affordable housing, you hope to rehab 200 units, and the neighborhood revitalization sustainability, you hope to benefit 1,800 persons, but you, you haven't been able to do that this year on the neighborhood revitalization and affordable housing. You're below what the average would be for five years. So I wonder if you could tell me how that happened, and how you're going to get back up to your goals?
Certainly. The five-year consolidated plan, this is year two. Year three will be starting in the, in the fall. So it's only two-fifths of the way, and you will note that we had some success last year, and that was because of Center for Hope and Safety came in. They received resources for us for this particular goal. And so we will be doing outreach in those areas where you see, where we haven't met this year, but there were only three goals this past year, and those two were not within those goals. So we had no applications.
All right. So the goals, you're going to be concentrating more on those goals in the upcoming years.
That is correct, sir.
Then, on pages 15 and 16, I'm looking at Table Two, the program income for the home report. And try as I might, I can't make those figures either add up or subtract up to what they end up showing. We had a $15,000 balance. We received $372,000. We spent $139,000, and I guess we're pretty close to $233,000. No, we're not. We're, we're below that, I think. But no, we're right there. We're pretty close. But then what is the tenant-based rental assistance? Where does that fit into those figures?
Well, HUD, this is, this is a template that HUD requires us to put in.
Oh, well, that explains it then.
That's, that's the first thing.
Okay, you don't need to tell me anything else. We're from the government. We're here to help, right?
In, in many respects, they are here to help us.
Good.
But these numbers are based upon, program income is derived throughout the year. Even though we're reporting on what happened in 2016-17, some of these program, some of the program income could have been from previous years, or they came in at different times. So we do the action plan. We make our assessment based upon, or we project how much program income we're going to get for that year. But things happen, so we can get more program income. So the most important part is that $233,000, we'll be able to use.
We still got it.
We'll be, we still have it, and we'll be able to use it in the future.
One more question, if I may, and that's the next page, on Table 12. Those are certain, those are great goals, minority business enterprises and women's business enterprise, but there's a whole lot of zeros there. So how are we going to get those numbers to be positive?
We're going to be working with lots of people to make those numbers look better.
Okay.
And we implore the community to please reach out to us as well. We will be doing a lot of public outreach over the next few months, trying to figure out what the community would like to see, and where can we find families or individuals who have a minority business and/or a women-owned business that we can help support. Sometimes it's also in the reporting. People don't understand what it takes to be an MBE or WBE, or, and so they don't always report right. So we'll also be working with our partners to make sure that they understand what categorizes those.
Well, I think that reaching out and contacting the community is terrific, and I'm sure all the people who are watching on CCTV tonight will be contacting you.
And I look forward to it.
To get those numbers up. Thank you very much. This is a valuable service that you're all providing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions? Right, I'm going to close public hearing.
I move we approve the middle of the 2016-2017 program year consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership to U.S. Department of HUDD.
Second.
Second by Cook. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Special orders of business. Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the mayor sign a letter on behalf of council declaring the council's support for maintaining or increasing state funding for safe routes to school educational grants.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you. If I can just speak to this motion. We had the proclamation for safe routes to school today, and it's come up quite frequently in front of council, the need of sidewalks, people excited about walking and biking. There's a second piece of that. Yes, if you build it, they will come, but you don't want them coming uneducated and uninformed about how to use these public spaces. So, and it's also, secondly, my firm belief that if you're not at the table, you wind up on the menu. There's funding designated for safe routes to school statewide. Salem should be at that table, and we should be asking for educational programs to support this really important work. When kids balk, when kids walk, bike, skate, scooter, roll to school, it impacts the whole community. It creates an urban renewal area where ingenuity and opportunity create solutions for neighbors. Safe routes to school addresses root causes of what keeps kids from walking, and it works to manage them upstream. Feet on the street means less traffic congestion, improved air quality, stronger senses of community and neighborhoods, safer streets for all modes of travel, and decreased crime by adding eyes on the street. Walking and biking to school lowers costs for families, communities, and school districts. Money is saved on gas, busing, and maintaining roads, in addition to improving access to our communities for everyone, parents with strollers, seniors, those without cards, and people with mobility, needing mobility assistance. Walking and biking to school spreads economic benefit in our community by increasing walkability in our community and adding to home values, benefiting local businesses, and benefiting local businesses. As we make changes to improve conditions for pedestrians and bicyclists, more people feel comfortable walking and biking, and that's great. It can create a positive cycle, pun intended, benefiting the whole community. But we need to support that with education, and we need to support that through policy work right here. We can feel proud about supporting healthy habits for families and protecting the environment where our children learn. where our children learn and promoting safety in our streets. It's important to continue this work and make walking and rolling to school, or I like to call it walk and roll, a preferred choice for families, and educating families about the full range of transportation options available to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. As aside, since I get to sign the letter, I'll let you know I'm looking forward to signing this letter. I think this is a real opportunity for us to gain some funding, as well as, again, highlight the Safe Routes to School program, which is an outstanding program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council adopt Resolution Number 2017-44 for Salem to become a child-friendly city.
Second. Second by Anderson.
Are we open for discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, you just.
Just go right ahead.
Go on ahead.
All right, so we had a lovely presentation tonight with Bondina from AARP. I want to see Tanya Hunt here next, presenting Salem with a certificate showing that we're the first city in Oregon to become a child-friendly city. Children are individual people, not people in the making. We heard so much testimony tonight, and their healthy development and active participation in our community is critical, not just for their future, but for ours. We all started as children, and we must remember that even though nobody knows what lies ahead, the children of today will be living in the world of tomorrow. Children grow towards independence with the health of adults. Their dependence and rate of development make them more vulnerable to their living conditions, such as poverty, poor housing, polluted environments, and even transportation. Even though individual needs of children differ, our community can support children through policies and recognizing the rights of kids living right here in Salem. How we invest in our families and children in our community determines the return we receive when those children are adults. While childhood is not universal, or while childhood is universal, opportunities for our children in our communities are not, but they can be. It is important to acknowledge the high cost of not investing in children in their early years, and how this investment, or lack thereof, significantly determines their contributions to society in the future and their fulfillment of their own potential. Children have no vote. They're dependent on the voices of adults to moderate our policies, but these policies affect their ability to grow, to learn, to play, and to read in our community. Our policies can support the health and well-being of vulnerable, the vulnerable among us, and ensure a strong, creative, and resilient future for our community.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comment? Counselor McCoy?
Well, as to one of the people that testified earlier, I feel compelled to speak a little bit here. I got curious on what UNICEF, I looked it up, I got, you know, so, wanted to know what the UNICEF Child Friendly City thing was about, and it's way more, it's a ton of reading. But I printed one sheet out here that's, it sort of was like the building blocks, the things that should be included in it, and it's a list of nine different items. One is children's participation, promoting children's active involvement in issues that affect them. Two is a child-friendly legal framework, ensuring legislation, regulatory frameworks, and procedures promote the rights of children on a consistent basis. A citywide children rights strategy, a children rights unit or coordinating mechanism developing permanent structures in local government to ensure priority consideration. Children impact assessment and valuation, ensuring there's a systematic process to assess the impact of what we're doing. A children's budget, ensuring adequate resource commitment and budget analysis. A regular state of the city's children report, making children's rights known, and independent advocacy for children, supporting non-governmental organizations, developing independent, so that's a lot of stuff. And, you know, it's one thing to say, yeah, we're all ready for a child, I'm wondering, as we go through a strategic plan where we sort of discussed this and came up with making Salem a safe and livable capital city with a sustainable economy and environment that is open to all with the intent to enrich the lives of its present and future residents. We're a month from putting that strategic plan into place. Here we're coming to something that's big. I'm wondering, likely vote for this, but is your intention, Counselor Cook, that all this is going to be included, or should be included, in the staff's report? Because this is not picking and choosing like we heard on the age, you know, the report from earlier on, from the Center 50-plus people, where they're going to have some recommendations, develop them on their own, and then come to us and ask us to fund those. This is having the staff create what it looks like to me is dang near another department for children, that we're going to have to staff, fund, and find the budget, the money's in the budget to develop. Just seems like a really complex way to attack the issue that you want to attack when we could go the other way and have the public and the people that were so passionate in here coming to discuss it, bringing to us the reasons and the ideas of what they want in a program, or what they think is needed in this city to make it a child-friendly, or, you know, make, help our children thrive as they move through their growing-up process.
Well, thank you, Counselor. I think as it was mentioned in Professor Binford's testimony, this is really what we want to make in it. And by having this designation as a child-friendly city, we do have the opportunity to say, this is something that's important. It doesn't mean that we need to have all nine building blocks all right now, all at once, and it doesn't mean that those nine blocks are already defined for us. We're renewing our library, or we're putting that on a bond, and it's something that people are supporting that affects kids.
Sure.
The objective restrooms came up in relation to homelessness today. That's something that affects children as well. Kids are silent partners in this, and kids are someone who, we heard testimony from Frances tonight, who is an excellent reader, by the way, I mean, I guess that's no surprise. But we, it's important that we have this designation, and it's important not just for the kids, but for the families. So this, it is very hard to navigate life as a child when you have a supportive family. But for working families that are struggling, this sends a message that the city of Salem supports you. The city of Salem honors the fact that people start out life being vulnerable. It doesn't mean that we have to develop a new department. And yes, we're moving through that strategic planning process, we'll be opening up the budgeting process again. This can be part of that discussion because we will be a child-friendly city, because we're having that designation, we're showing where our priorities are.
I also want to join Counselor Cook just for a second in this. I want to direct your attention to Section 2 of the resolution. Council directs staff to prepare recommended implementation criteria and standards using UNICEF Child Friendly City Toolkit and Framework as guidance for defining Salem as a child-friendly city. I think what this does, just reading it for what it says, what the resolution says, it gives us an opportunity to do, I think, exactly what Professor Binford said, which is develop our own plan. But there are, just like we're using AARP for the age-friendly, we're using, at least we have something to work with, someplace to start. I hope we end up with the same kind of 40-person thinking, you know, involve people doing the same kind of work. I think the model that 50-plus is using is a good one, but that's up to the folks that will put this together. But I don't think this really confines us, Counselor, to the UNICEF list.
Well, it's Section 1 says, "We hereby declare it supportive of the city of Salem becoming a UNICEF child-friendly city." Not a child-friendly city, a UNICEF, which is why I looked this stuff up to see what that meant. This is what that means. And, you know, that's what it means. So we're passing a resolution, it's instructing the staff to develop a program based on these requirements.
Well, it says use it as a toolkit and guidance, a framework.
Okay, well, then I would question, do we take UNICEF out and just call ourselves a child-friendly city? Because you can't have it both ways. You can't say we're going to be a UNICEF child-friendly city and then pick and choose and don't follow the requirements.
I think we can, I do. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I agree with your comments, Mr. Mayor, and I am going to quote Professor Binford again, not on how Counselor Cook quoted her, but for her talking about the work that I and others, including City Manager Powers, have gone through to get this to this state. And the original resolution had a whole lot of whereases and then many resolves, and the whereases were about the same as they are now, but the resolves were, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to adopt, and rightfully so. The city manager said, and I agree with him, that gee, this is a lot of budgetary things, a lot of staff time. Do we want to jump right into it that way, or do we want to declare our intentions and then have the staff come back with these recommendations? So it may be, in response to Counselor McCoy, that the staff may look at all this and come back and say, this is going to take all this time and all this energy and everything else, and then we have a determination. But they may come back and say, many of these goals are aspirational, we don't have to agree with all of them, and so we need that, we need that report. The second thing I would say is, with respect to Counselor McCoy, that was, his concern about the process is a concern that, you know, I raise process issues all the time. And we do have this vision process where it was discussed, and I don't know if it was under that headline, or I thought there was another one, that Moore talked about a friendly city and welcoming city for all ages. I could, yeah.
Something.
Yeah, something like that, I'm paraphrasing. Well, it seems to me that this UNICEF resolution could be a bullet point under that. So it's coming sort of after the process, but all we were doing, the vision process, is giving the overarching goals, and then the bullet points, how will you achieve that, will be underneath, and this would be one of it. So I'm very much in favor of that.
Yeah, I think what Counselor Cook has done here is what we always ask, is if you're going to use staff time, come to council and ask permission. That's really all, I think fundamentally, that's what's here, is permission to use staff time to work on this. City manager's reviewed it, he said with this language, that would be fine. I think that's really what's going on here, and lets us then go into this issue. Counselor.
I, it's fine. I wanted to bring it up because I read this and went, holy cow. That's not what I thought, when I read this, I went, oh, that's okay, and then I looked into it and went, my goodness. I wanted to bring this up, make you aware of what exactly was involved in it.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had similar questions. It was like, what is a UNICEF child-friendly city? I didn't have the time to go buzz off and look at it while I eat cookies. Sorry. But typically, to have staff work on something, we don't throw a resolution to them, and so the last whereas in the first section where it says, we want to become the first UNICEF child-friendly city, and that we support us becoming said kind of city, I have no clue what that means.
We'll find out.
I, yeah, but if we approve a resolution, we're approving those statements and putting our name on it. So I, I'm fine with the resolution, but I don't support the last whereas in the first section one because I'm ignorant of what that actually means.
So if I could bring to your attention, Counselor Nanki, on Section 3 for the resolution, staff's recommendation shall be provided for council's consideration at the January 2018 work session to determine the council's policy direction for the coming year. We have a chance to start 2018 as the first child-friendly city in Oregon. We have a chance to start the new budget process, saying, who's missing from this discussion? Are we being truly equitable? What are we missing? And how can we start tackling some of the issues we're dealing with now upstream?
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with any of that. It's just sticking somebody else's name on who's the owner of the child-friendly city program, if you know what I mean.
Right, I hear your discomfort with that term, but I think, given the testimony, I think the representations that have been made, we're not confined to what, to just the UNICEF program. We can also localize it.
But we use their name twice and say, we want to be a UNICEF child-friendly city. Again, I don't know what that actually means, not having read that, so.
I hear what you're saying, okay.
I don't have any problem being a child-friendly city, or elderly-friendly city, or middle-aged friendly city, or.
Do you want to vote?
There's maybe a couple of them that.
Any of you want to vote yet? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Counselor Anderson, you're on.
Oh, gosh. I move the staff recommendation. I got lost here. I know it's on the Nen-Lansing Plan.
Yes.
I move the staff recommendation, Nesca, excuse me, Nesca-Lansing Plan. I apologize to Nesca and to Nen and the councilors who are contained therein.
I think Hoy will still second this.
Are you submitting the apology?
Yes, it's a big faux pas. I'm all in support of this. One of my neighborhoods is in there, and the other is Counselor Hoy's, and I think also maybe some of Counselor Osick's, and we already had one that was Nen and.
And Kazer.
And, okay, over here. Half the council is involved in this plan, and I and other councilors have been involved in the Cessna-Nen Plan, which I thought was very good. So I really appreciate the staff work, I really appreciate the citizen volunteer work. I think this is a terrific thing, and I look forward to the next go-around when we will have two other neighborhoods going to the plan. So I commend the staff for this, and I commend the citizens who took part in it.
Pretty universal commendation. Anyone else want to talk on this? Counselor Hoy?
I just wanted to agree with Counselor Anderson on this. I think it's been, I've heard a lot of great feedback from the neighborhood association and very much support this.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Kazer? Is your half-street happy, too? Okay.
My 10 houses, I'm happy with.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go to information reports. Well, you've heard the information report on 50-plus. I don't think we need more in it. Anything else here, anyone want to pull anything? Okay. All righty, we'll move on then. We'll do, move to first reading of ordinances.
Ordinance Bill Number 2217, an ordinance relating to promotion and preservation of safe sidewalks, amending SRC 95.720730740, amending and renumbering 95.735736750760, renumbering 95.770, creating 95.800, 95.830, and 990.
Okay.
Well, I'll throw one out here. I'm not sure where we want to go. I direct that, I move that the Ordinance Bill 22-17 be scheduled for a public hearing at a future meeting to receive public testimony.
Okay, we have a motion to move this to a public hearing at as yet undetermined date. Would anyone like to hear what this ordinance says from the chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, chief, could we, could we hear a little on this? We've heard quite a bit this evening. Some of it I recognize, some of it I don't, and I want to understand what's going on here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and councilor. My name is Jerry Moore, I'm the chief of police in Salem. I will tell you, I don't, I've worked for the department for many years, and I think that over that time, we brought three or four ordinances forward, and it's possible after tonight, I may never do that again. But, you know, kidding aside, I think it's important how we talk about how we got here. For years, we have responded to citizen, or councilor, or a variety of people's complaints about the behavior of certain individuals. This ordinance that we brought to you tonight was not brought to you without a lot of thought and evaluation and a little bit of consternation, because I listened to the discussions that the people that spoke here tonight had, and I will tell you, we have thought of those on a routine basis. It's not, nothing surprised me what I heard tonight. There is compassion by our officers as well, and empathy. There is compassion by our officers as well, and empathy for people that are in a situation where they have nowhere to live. But most of the complaints that we've received over the years have to do with community and individual welfare, public health, criminal behavior, and fear and safety for everyone involved, including those that don't have any place to live. On a daily basis, our officers receive complaints about behavior of individuals, you receive them, the city manager's office receives them, and Kristen receives them from downtown merchants, or just neighbors who live near parks or anywhere that this behavior goes on. And the issues are safety of citizens, buildup of garbage, human waste, drug or alcohol, paraphernalia, and what can be done to enforce laws to improve livability. And there's also a lot of frustration by the community members, because our police officers go out, and not having a place to live is not a crime. And we certainly recognize that, and we don't take action because of that. And I think that's, that's how we got to where we are today. This ordinance isn't about criminalizing people who don't have a place to live. We, we understand that's not a crime, and if you know any of our officers, you would know that that's not how we operate. But in speaking with my friends and associates who deal with people that don't have a place to live on a routine basis, one of the many things they say is that many people don't have a place to live because of addictions, or alcohol, or mental health issues, or some of those things that are actually the things that we end up responding to because of the behavior of individuals. You know, our department has many values, and one of those is compassion. And you can talk to just about everyone, including the people that we see on the streets, that there may not be a more compassionate police department than the Salem Police Department. Our officers always look for ways to assist, they try to find solutions for people. I was told the other day, we've, in the, in the recent months or year, we've, we've, we contact people every single day, but our downtown team goes out of its way to try and find resources and help for people. They contacted 58 individuals to try and find them housing, and they were able to find housing for 28 of those individuals, which is really a big deal. And I will tell you, I understand jails are full, I understand that people get caught up in the system, and they can never get out, and that's not what this ordinance is about. This ordinance is about people and officers, officers trying to help people, get them off the streets and get them someplace to live. And of course, there is an enforcement equation to this, which is why a lot of people were talking tonight. You know, our officers have a great deal of empathy for people that are homeless, and the, the stories reflected tonight, the comments reflected tonight are a perfect example of this. But as a, as a police chief, I also have empathy for other people, and that's community members that are concerned about who owns stores, or shop downtown, or live in neighborhoods near, where behavior such as this is occurring. And so it's probably my responsibility to look out for them, just as much as I look out for people that don't have a place to live. And that's where this ordinance came from, in that it has been used in other cities, some major cities, and it, and it works fairly well. So that's how this came about. There was a comment tonight about people shouldn't be afraid of going downtown, or going near people that are exhibiting the behavior that they exhibit, or whatever it might be. But the fact of the matter is, perception is reality, and we are fooling ourselves if we don't think people are afraid to go to some of these places, whether it's right or whether it's wrong, because of some of the things they see. And I tell you that because I've worked here a long time, and I've heard it for years, that those are some of the issues. This ordinance, as designed, does not prohibit sleeping on the sidewalks at night. This is a 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM ordinance, which directs that during those hours, you can't sleep on public sidewalks. It also includes the fact that the first thing a police officer has to do who's contacting an individual because they're involved in that behavior, is to advise them of the ordinance, it's to educate them, and it's to also try and find a solution to their issue. And the ordinance, the ordinance requires that, and that's what we've brought forward to you. Now, quite frankly, if we contact someone, or we try and find them help, we educate them on where they can go for help, and they choose not to avail themselves of whatever that assistance might be, they can be excluded from the downtown area, and if they refuse anything after that, they can be cited or arrested for trespass. So that's really the crux of the, the ordinance. I, I know people talked about tonight, or today, about gee, people can't sleep downtown at night, and I'm not advocating that, because sleeping on a sidewalk isn't good for anyone. But this ordinance is designed to address behavior between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and not after that. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Well, if you could describe, if you would, what would the, what's the contact sound like? Who are we talking about? What's the contact sound like? I, I'm not sure I fully, someone is sleeping in the doorway of a business at 7:05, what happens? How's it work?
Well, we don't have the ordinance, so I can't tell you, but I can tell you what other cities do.
Okay.
Their officers routinely go out early in the morning. Individ, a lot of individuals learn the ordinance, they learn when they can be there, when they can't be there. A lot of them start to move on when business is open, or the time of the ordinance. In many of the cases where we've spoke with officers from other cities, they go around and they basically wake people up, or they talk to people and they say, you know, it's time to move on. And that's, that's what those contacts have been in some of those other cities. I'm not an expert on it, but I can just tell you, our officers have contacts like those on a daily basis, where they contact people and say, hey, look, whatever your behavior is, it's, it's not what it should be, it's not acceptable, and in many cases, it may be illegal. You need to stop, you need to move on, and when we get compliance, that ends it, so.
Where, where does a homeless person downtown go at 7:10? Can they go to Marion Square Park and lay down? Can they go, are there places for them to go?
Yeah, well, obviously, after, in daylight hours, our parks are open. I, I think, all you have to do is drive by our parks, and you can see people that are sleeping in them all the time. It's not unlawful behavior. We don't, we don't take action against that. And so there's places like, the Salvation Army is actually open during the day now, again.
Yeah, I thought so. I heard people say it isn't. It is, is that correct?
Somebody mentioned, it's open during the day. Somebody mentioned Community Action is across from Marion Square Park. That will be a daycare, a day center, if you will, that where people can go. And this, this ordinance is designed basically so that during business hours, where people are trying to conduct business, that you can't be sleeping in the downtown, well, it's designed for all over the city, but it's more, mostly impactful in areas where commerce is, is occurring.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's a great lead into that, because right now, there's, if someone is sleeping on the sidewalk in front of someone's business doorway, or in the sidewalk in front of, you know, Tom's neighbor's house, can we remove them?
If, if we get a call today of somebody sleeping at Rite Aid, and, and we get a call from Rite Aid and say, hey, they're, Mr. and Mrs. customers are doing whatever they're doing, if the only action is that they're sleeping in that sleeping bag, we can contact them and say, hey, we got a complaint, we want to let you know, the people that work, or that are trying to conduct business here would appreciate if you would leave. If they decide to leave, that's great. If they decide not to, we get our bikes and ride away.
Yeah, which kind of goes back to the first conversations we had, and a lot of the folks today talking about child-friendly cities, and that they won't let their children out of their sight, but if somebody decides to camp out on the sidewalk in front of your house, and you got small children in the house, is that fear or inconvenience, or, you know? There, there's got to be a way for the officers to at least talk to them. We're talking First Amendment, Second Amendment's the same thing. We have a rule here that basically says you can't open carry a weapon unless you have a concealed carry permit, so that the police can go and ask an individual, hey, what you doing? I'm not necessarily a big fan of that, but it, it's a tool, and I've talked with the police chief about it as well. So this gives us a tool to actually encourage someone to move on. It's going to be like zoning or compliance services. Most everything's on a complaint basis. I don't see our guys having the time to actually go and survey the entire, entire downtown, or all the public streets for that matter, and wrestle people out. There, there are some places that it sounds like we have more of an issue than others, and people are asking for help.
Okay, Counselor McCoy?
Couple other questions, chief. One, there's a, there's a whole part of this proposal that talks about camping. And as I read it, you basically prohibit camping anywhere other than, any public area in the city. Is that right? And how would you then use that moving forward?
Well, I think camping is illegal in parks and places. You can't set up a homestead, for lack of a better term, and I could show you pictures that would, that would amaze you of, of camps that we've had to clean out, and the, the, it takes a dump truck to clean out a camp. And part of this ordinance, I believe, was designed so that you can't set up a tent, or you can't set up a camp, a campsite on a, on a public sidewalk. And that's why that, that camping was included.
I get that, but it also says public, it just says public grounds, not just specific to sidewalks. So that was one of my questions, if that was being placed in there, because there are other issues you wanted to deal with. The other thing is, it, these are now, as I, as I read it, a Class B misdemeanor? I think that's what, what it equates to. But, but the only punishment is, it's not a fine or anything, they're going to get excluded from whatever the area is, this would, is that right?
Well, you can be excluded from an area, and we've had that ordinance in place for 20 years or so, and it's a, and it's an effective tool. And quite frankly, if, if we exclude somebody from the downtown area, but they come to one of our officers and say, hey, I need to come downtown because that's where I eat, or that's where my mental health provider is, we write them a variance and say, go do what you got to do. But really, what we're trying to do is, in the, the ordinance to, to do that, that's been in place for many years, has been, was put in place to try and keep people out of there that are frequent flyers, if you will, that continue to, to commit violations. Trespass out on a, on a public sidewalk out in the community, we would probably issue them a citation and, and not take anyone to jail. I, I mentioned earlier, clogging our, clogging the system with people that don't have a place to live, only for that reason, doesn't make sense. And they get caught up in, they get caught up in the system where they never recover, and it doesn't do us any good. We end up arresting them, and they failed to appear, and we arrest them on a warrant, and it's just, it's, quite frankly, it's a never-ending cycle. So arrest is the last thing that we want to do to someone in this situation. But quite frankly, and honestly, it gives us some teeth if someone just simply decides they're not going to cooperate. And there's many places that are different than that, that you can go. I'm not saying they're better, I'm not saying they're a panacea of a place you want to go stay during the day, but it's a different place, and those places do exist, and you can keep from getting arrested.
One more question?
Yes.
It, you know, in the conversation, what continually comes up is downtown area. This basically, the way I read it was written, it was the whole city, but we keep referring to the downtown area. Would, would it, would it help if at some point, if, if we move along and start acting or looking for amendments, if we just amended this to be the downtown area and not the whole city? What would your response to that be?
That's your call. You know, I would say that most of our complaints come from the downtown area, but it's not uncommon for us to get a complaint about somebody camping in Busch Park, or on a sidewalk somewhere, so we'd have to, you'd have to evaluate that. But the downtown is the biggest source, and probably the biggest reason why this exists, and probably the biggest reason why it exists in other cities.
Counselor Anderson.
Chief, I've got another question, and I'm going to preface this, and then I'll make a comment or two after the questions. I have to say, I agree with you, Chief Moore, that you do have a fantastically compassionate, if those two words go together, department. And I have seen that, not only from you on down, but I have seen that, I live close to Bush's pasture park, and I have seen many instances where I have come across your officers dealing with people in these situations, and they have been nothing but compassionate, and I've seen that. And so it's not just you and your deputies, it goes down to the lowest level. And they may know I'm a city councilor now, but they always didn't know when I was coming by, and I would say, hey, what's going on? And, you know, I recall one time, they said, well, this is a man who has some trouble, and he's got some mental problems, and we're trying to figure out the best way to help him. And I think that's repeated throughout the city. So having said that, I guess my question is, when I look at the ordinance here, it seems like there already is an anti-trespassing situation. I think, and I'm looking at the city attorney, there already is a no camping in parks prohibition. So it seems to me like the only additional thing that this ordinance gives you is in section 95.720 point, a sub E, where it says, no person shall be cited under this section unless the person engages in contact prohibited by, after having been notified. And it kind of relates to what you said, if there was a person in front of, you know, let's just say the Kmart, you said something else, but they were sleeping during the day, and you ask them to move on, and if they did, great, if they didn't, there was really nothing you could do unless there was some other activity that was causing the problem. And so what this ordinance would give you would be to say, if you say you need to move on, and they don't move on, you can cite them. Is that, is that right?
We would, we would, I think we exclude them from the downtown core, correct?
Okay.
And if, and if they continue to stay there, then we'd cite them, or arrest them for trespass.
Okay, so can you exclude now from the downtown core?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have a few comments. I have to say, you know, I am a lawyer, and I did read the statute, and I'm not a constitutional lawyer, nor am I municipal lawyer, but I also want to commend the city attorney, because I think you have made a great effort to avoid an unconstitutional effect of this. And I can see that in the, in the wording of the statutes, and the definitions, and the findings. So I think that's terrific, and you're to be commended for that, but I'm not sure that it's not going to get challenged, and I think it probably, it probably would. So I don't know where that comes into the consideration, but I think it's going to happen, despite Mr. Atchison's best efforts. Second thing I want to say, and this is also comes from what I have seen downtown, and what I have heard from other commissions, and I, I see that Ms. Bennet, who was here, is gone, but I've been to the H Rack and had some discussions, Lieutenant Aguilar, last meeting, had some discussions about what happens downtown and what you do. And it seems to me that the real problem here is the possessions that people take with them. And it makes perfect sense that if all your life's possessions are in one or two, or three or four shopping carts, and you've got no place to put them, that you're going to take them with you wherever you go. Otherwise, you lose whatever you have. And, you know, so it's you go. Otherwise, you lose whatever you have. And, you know, so it certainly looks like if there were some way to have, and we've talked about this before, if there were some storage units, so people don't have to feel like they need all their possessions with them, there's someplace they could safely store them, that it would not have the appearance of the problem, which is, I think, what you were talking about earlier, Chief. Would you agree with that?
I would agree completely. In fact, Sergeant Hill, who Kevin Upkeys and others have, Christian, have worked hard to try and find us a location where people can store their property. Because quite frankly, if you, if you're carting around everything you own, it's hard to go find a place to take a shower. It's hard to go apply for a job.
To go to the bathroom in one of the hard parts.
To go to the bathroom to go eat. So I think that would be an incredibly great piece of the solution. I will tell you, leaving your property abandoned on a city street is part of this ordinance.
Yes, I read that, yeah.
Okay, but, but we don't remove it for 24 hours or so, I think. So it's not like, boom, you're, you're going to the bathroom, and we're gonna come haul your possessions.
You're following them around to grab their property, yeah. I know it isn't because you're a compassionate department.
There you go. But, but I will tell you, your question is absolutely right. My officers and staff truly believe if somebody, if someone had someplace to store their property during the day, that it would be an improvement, and it would be, quite frankly, less unsightful.
One more comment, please. I also want to say that I was impressed by the testimony of two, I mean, I was impressed by everybody's testimony, speaking from the heart. But the two that kinda stood out to me were Britta France and Nick, Nick Williams.
Nick Williams?
Yeah. Because Mr. Williams was the only person who spoke today who could be interpreted to be representing business interests downtown. And he didn't come out and say, "We're all in support of this." He came out and said, "People exercise evidence compassion for this situation and wanted to know what they could do." And then Britta Friends comes in and says, "We need to involve everybody in the community. We need to think out this process, you know, and we can all work together to do our little bit to resolve the issue." And we've just discussed about some of the issues now. So I have a potential motion in mind, but I want to wait a bit to see what the other counselors have to say.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what is a little bit curious for me about this measure is, we're addressing a problem that we're seeing. We hear about people concerned, seeing the effect of homelessness in our community, seeing the effect of these symptoms in our community. But I don't just see the problem, I see the symptoms. And I'm concerned that this measure doesn't really do much to address those, those causes, those root causes that contribute and cause this issue. Going back to the bathrooms, I've had several owners that live in my ward that own property downtown talk about use of sidewalks and alleys for restrooms because there's not a restroom at night that's open and available, about it being, you know, feeling unsafe or uneasy about taking business trash out for people that work there. That's definitely something that we need to address, but I don't really feel that this issue or that this measure addresses it. Also, the use of public space. We just had Salem Open Streets where our streets and sidewalks are public spaces. And I think myself of times where I, you know, brought my girls out, and they've fallen asleep in public. Obviously, you know, Chief, he's not going to be citing my daughter for falling asleep in public. I don't think I would let her sleep on the sidewalk. I'm trying to think of a situation where we would, you know, maybe meetings in the parks. But I feel like this ordinance doesn't really apply to me. And that sort of, it sticks a bit because it should definitely be universal. And then I think, well, when would it apply to me? When do I use public sidewalks or public spaces? And is that really something that, once we start not just looking at how we're using them, but how we, how we respond and use that public space and how we legislate it, those unintended consequences from this? I feel pretty strongly about it, just because this is something that we can address. I'm just not sure that this is the right way to do it, since it doesn't get to any of those root causes.
Counselor Kazer?
Thank you. Sorry, Chief, I had, I did have one question for you.
Snacks.
My understanding of the ordinance that's currently on the books as far as sidewalks is that somebody can't obstruct the sidewalk. And if somebody's obstructing the sidewalk, then they can be removed from the sidewalk or asked to leave or whatever. Is that kind of a correct interpretation?
Well, I'd probably let Sergeant Hill respond to this, but I'll do my best. We can cite someone for obstructing a public sidewalk, but the definition of obstructing the sidewalk is pretty narrow. And if you can walk around someone, if the sidewalk is five feet wide and they're only taking four and a half feet, then they're not obstructing the sidewalk. So my perception is it's fairly ineffective. I'm getting some head nods, so I think that's, that's the case as well. We've had that ordinance forever, and it has not solved any of the complaints that we've had to deal with.
I just have a couple more comments. Thank you for that. I thought it was interesting, actually. So this is, I mean, obviously downtown is my ward. I think this, the issue of people kind of sleeping in the right of way is mostly in Ward One, probably a bit in Ward Two, but it's really concentrated downtown for sure. I think most of the complaints I've received have been from the business community. I think it's interesting that those people didn't come tonight. So it tells me either they didn't know about it, which I kind of find hard to believe, since there was a big article in the paper that generated a lot of comment about it. My other thought was that maybe they feel like this isn't the right approach, or maybe they don't have strong feelings about it. But one way or another, they weren't here tonight to hear that side. So we heard from people, I mean, I think I counted up in my notes over our two hours of testimony, we had 20 people say they didn't support this, and they spent their time and their evening down here telling us about it. And I know we received written testimony and all of that. The complaints that I receive in my ward about people sleeping on the sidewalks usually are regarding those people's behavior. It's not really about people sleeping or sitting. It's about what they're doing when they're sleeping or sitting. So when they're sleeping, it's about, they have all their things with them. It's unsightly. They're spreading garbage, that sort of thing. Or when they're sitting there, they are, I've received complaints about, you know, they're defecating, or they're peeing, or whatever, on the sidewalk, or they're, I've heard some people say they've, you know, had a knife pulled on them, or they're trespassing into private property, they're getting in their backyards. So it's not so much that they're, they're there. It's what they're doing while they're there. And that's a behavior issue as opposed to a human condition, kind of as Counselor Hoy put it on his Facebook page. And I think all the times that I've been contacted by people about the behavior part, I think, well, did you call the police? Because if I'm approached by somebody and they pull a knife on me, it doesn't matter if they're homeless. It doesn't matter if they're sitting or lying on the sidewalk. They're committing a crime, and the police need to get involved. Or if somebody's, you know, in my private property, they're trespassing. That's a problem. That's a behavior. It's not because they just happened to be there. It's they, they're behaving in a way that's illegal. The unsightliness thing with people having their personal possessions, I think that is a reaction by folks that those people aren't, they're not subscribing to a normal social moray that we might share as kind of mainstream folks. And this is a kind of alternative way of living. I think, you know, that's very, very subjective to the people. And I think those things are, those things are more, they're more gray. And we can't definitively say, you know, you have to look, look like this. You can't drag your things around because we don't do that. That's hard to defend. The other thing I get complaints about is the bathrooms. And we have all been on the receiving end of the email from business owners sending us pictures of the refuse of that. In my mind, it's, it's because there is a lack of facilities to use, is one thing, and people, for whatever reason, not having, not having access to it. I think part of that could also be mental health issues, where people aren't, they don't know where to go, or whatever it might be. So I agree also with Counselor Anderson about the storage of personal property. I think, I think if we had a space here in the city that somebody who is carrying around their life possessions felt like they could safely leave, and it wouldn't be stolen from them, and that they could feel comfortable going out during the day when those things, and not having those with them, I think we might see the businesses downtown and residents downtown feel a little bit better because you're not having the shopping cart trains or, you know, people pulling their packs and personal possessions around with them. So, so at this time, I just don't think that this ordinance is the right step. I think it's interesting, though, that what the chief said about obstructing the sidewalk is very, very narrow. That could potentially be something we could look at, is that definition too narrow? If you're taking up four and a half feet of a five-foot wide sidewalk, that's not considering obstructing. I think there are other things that, that we could look at, but right now, we haven't had a lot of support from this publicly, and I'm not sure of sending this on to a public carry. And I think we're gonna get a lot of the same that we got tonight. And I think it's gonna be a lot of another or two, two-hour-long testimony.
Thank you. I do want to assure you, there's a lot of work going on around the storage issue from, I think, the police and others trying to get this resolved. I keep trying to talk them into using the Delon Motor site as a great storage place. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance deeply troubles me, as many of you know. And probably the biggest thing that troubles me about it is that we've, I think we've really done a disservice to Chief Moore and to our police department, that they're in a position where they feel like this is a solution. We have failed them as a city and as a community where a law enforcement, a law enforcement answer is even being considered. This should not be how we deal with a social problem like this. I'm very sympathetic to the business owners, and I have deep respect for Chief Moore and for all of his officers. Everything that's been said about him and his staff tonight is completely true. And it's, it's very difficult for me on a personal level to oppose this because I want to always support the chief of police and his department. But I don't support this ordinance. I've been in law enforcement in my personal life for almost 29 years, and I've never, never seen a good outcome when we criminalize the human condition. And I know that that's not the chief's goal. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to suggest it, as I would never suggest that. I know him. I know him well, and I know that's never would be his goal. But that will be the outcome of this ordinance if we pass it. And I don't think that that's a good idea. And when you're, whatever circumstance brings you to sleeping on the sidewalk, and that becomes a crime, there's not going to be a good outcome. And, but it will be the inevitable outcome. It has to be. It will happen. If we, if we make it a crime to sleep on the sidewalk or sit on the sidewalk during the day, people will get arrested. They won't appear in court most of the time. A warrant will get issued. They won't appear in court again. Another warrant will get issued. And we'll repeat that cycle over and over and over again, and we won't have solved the problem. And once you get in the criminal justice system, it's almost impossible to get out, even in the best of circumstances. We're a city of compassion. That's, we've been talking all night about that, that we've had so many compassionate and passionate people come and testify. And that's what this city is about, and that's what we need to bring to bear to solve this problem. Because I, I'm not suggesting at all that we should do nothing. We need to address this issue. We just don't need to address it with this ordinance. We need to bring the community together. We need to bring all of the social service agencies together, because I don't necessarily believe this is the city's problem to solve. This is our nonprofits, our social service agencies. It's our communities. It's my, as a citizen, as a resident of Salem, it's partly my problem to solve. It's not, it should not be the city government just solely on our shoulders. We all need to come together to solve this problem. And we need to focus all of our efforts on providing resources and helping, helping people who find themselves where sitting and lying on the sidewalk in the middle of the day is their reality. We need to help them with a hand up so they can get themselves out of this circumstance, whatever it is, whether it's mental illness, whether it's substance abuse, whatever it is, whether it's having a place to take a shower, whether it's having a place to, to store your property, or whether it's, you know, just a place to feel safe. We need to be providing that. And that's not necessarily the city's job to provide that. But if we, if we pass this ordinance, or if we even move it along and make this a criminal, will ultimately be a criminal event, it's just the wrong direction. It's not who we are in Salem. And I really would encourage all of my colleagues to vote against this. And to then come to the table and with all of these people, we can be a convener, Mr. Mayor. We can bring these groups together, and we can solve this problem. I know we can.
Yeah, I hear you, Counselor. I, I'm really sympathetic as well with the situation we placed our police department in.
Yes.
Enforce the law, but there's no law. But, you know, and this is the breakdown of a state and county system of mental health.
That's right.
Particularly the state, walking away from their responsibilities decades ago and leaving these poor folks laying in the street. That's how I feel. Having worked in one of the state hospitals, it was one of the big jobs we had, was working with folks in exactly the situation you see downtown. Nobody's there to work with them now. And then I listen to people say, "It's the city's responsibility without resources. It's an impossible task." And I admire the chief's comment that they have been pulling people out of this. They've gotten 28 out in just the past couple of months. I mean, this is serious work going on. Not some kind of quickie, small, small houses or tent city, leaving people sleeping in sleeping bags. This has been a real, true attempt to resolve this problem, and I think we've given it about two months of work. And it's time, we continue, and maybe more people join us in this hard work of getting these folks the information they need to become involved in housing that actually exists, real housing, housing first. But I kinda go along with you on this. I'm really sympathetic, though, having represented downtown, having listened to this for 10 years. And I tell you, you can almost see the day it fell apart was the day that folks couldn't get their stuff someplace and put it away. And all of a sudden, they became highly visible in this community, and it's like the phone began to ring. Where'd all these people, they all must have been sent down from Portland to be here, or something like that. But I, Counselor, I am more than willing to work with you and the chief and others, the city management, to convene a group, follow the suggestions that Britta gave us and others, to address this in a different way, and see if we can find a non-legalistic solution. But I hope that we go at it really, really seriously and not do, I don't want to see a bunch of People magazine articles on what they're doing in some town somewhere that, in fact, when you call, you discover it fell apart a year ago. It's really finding solutions. And I, I don't want to kid ourselves about how hard this will be.
That's right.
And the only other thing I'd suggest, I like, I like McCoy's motion myself in a way, because it gives us a chance to convene people. Again, I still want to convene people in the feeling that somehow we're gonna, you know what I mean, that the spirit is wrong for the kind of convening we want to do if we're gonna try to resolve this. But I'd be more than happy to start putting something together and come back to you with an idea, working with the chief and management to see if there is an alternative, if you'll, if you'll give me a little time. Counselor Anderson?
Counselor Cook was ahead of me. I'm ready to make a motion, but if you want to say something.
I just had a question for the discussion, or discussion point.
Go ahead.
Would it be a good starting point, Mr. Mayor, in talking about this issue and addressing it, to start with the restroom issue? I know in San Diego, just this past week, they're dealing with a massive hepatitis A outbreak because it, you know, we're not dealing with those root causes. And I think restrooms, because they're used by everyone, not just one population. And it is the human condition, as Counselor Hoy was saying. Would that be appropriate thing?
I think I'd, you would certainly be more than willing to work with management and I think I'd, you would certainly be more than willing to work with management. There are certain issues, I think we all have heard, about those restrooms and the problems associated with them. But how can we, how can we up the ante a little bit? I'm sure willing to do that.
Okay.
Tom.
Thank you. I'm going to propose a substitute motion. I move that the city council establish a task force of council, staff, social service agencies, downtown community, and greater Salem community to study the issue of homelessness in the downtown and North Salem crime prevention districts as defined in the proposed statute.
Have the mayor convene that.
Sure. Mayor's fine. Mayor's fine. I change that to move that the mayor establish the task force in the various issues I talked about.
Friendly amendment.
Well, somebody's got to second it before he can do that. Okay.
All of Salem? Because even though the issue, no, just...
So, we have, I'll speak to the, sure. We have had however many task for, or whatever. So, if we're going to do this again, it needs to be, the scope needs to be this big.
That big.
Not this, not the whole world.
Okay.
Needs to be this big. So, and I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Do you want to put that in your motion?
Well, I don't know. I think...
This much.
No, I think Counselor Kizer was supporting the motion as is.
As is, without the amendment.
Because there are two areas that the chief has said are the problems. The main one is downtown, but it's been, there's this other thing called the north, which is a pretty broad area out Hawthorne Market, you know, in the northeast area of town. So, those are the two areas where the problems are. That's why my motion was confined to those two areas. So, I'm sorry, Counselor Cook, I'm not going to accept that friendly amendment, but I presume that, you know, when we talk about greater Salem community, downtown community, I presume that whatever solutions we come up with for these areas would apply to the whole city.
But, let me, okay.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to think of how to get this put together correctly and I think satisfy the concerns of all of us, but I'm sensitive to Counselor Kizer's concern. What about we just postpone, and I hate doing this, but right now, I'd like to have some time to talk with the chief about it. I think we all would like to take a little time just to get a sense of what you actually would like to do, because we're kind of, I mean, I don't know if it's citywide. I've had people living in yards of property I own and been concerned. I don't know. I, yeah, have you got something?
I just wanted to say, when I say scope, I don't want to talk about necessarily geographic. It could be topical. It could be bathrooms, could be the scope. Or it could be sleeping on the sidewalk could be the scope. But whatever it is, it has to be very narrowly defined so we can actually get something done about it. And that's the purpose of the task force as opposed to a committee or something like that.
Why don't I report back? You give me a month to report back to you with a proposal to you to see if you want to, or is that too much time?
That'll put us in...
I do whatever you want with this, but give me some time to report back to you on what the proposal would look like.
I would be happy with that motion to give the mayor the time needed, and a month is fine. And again, I point out that this ordinance is really aimed toward those two districts we've been talking about, not toward the city as a whole. We've already got the anti-camping ordinance, we already have trespassing, we already have other issues. So, that's where the scope of this ordinance is, or the scope of the proposed ordinance was, and that's where the police and the people who live and work and have businesses in our community, that's where we need, we should have our, focus of our concern.
So, you're going to amend your motion to give the mayor a month to put this?
Yes, sir.
What was the motion? Can we have...
Let me do whatever I want?
Well, I'm happy to. I mean, had this come to a motion, I was going to vote against the, vote it down, and then I was going to propose this, exactly what I proposed. But I think a substitute motion does the same thing. It kills, it kills the proposed ordinance.
Why don't we, why don't we vote on the motion?
The city attorney is clearing his throat.
I managed to stay quiet all night, and I probably shouldn't be opening my mouth now. But the motion, both Counselor McCoy's motion and your motion, doesn't necessarily kill the ordinance.
Okay.
So, if you want to kill the ordinance, you need to just make a motion to reject it.
Okay. Can I make a substitute to the substitute motion?
(laughing).
Okay. I rescind my motion, and I call the question on Counselor McCoy's motion.
Set a public hearing.
Yes.
At a future date. Am I ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay.
Now, I repeat my earlier motion, and I can repeat it if you would like, but I'm hoping that the city recorder got it. Okay. No, I can't. I wrote it down. So, I'll do it. I move that the mayor establish a task force of council, staff, social service agencies, the downtown community, and the greater Salem community to study the issue of homelessness in the downtown and North Salem crime prevention districts as established in the proposed ordinance that was just defeated. Okay. No.
Wait. Make that motion right there. There is no motion on this. There's just...
That is correct. The ordinance is still, so if you want to add to that, maybe I could suggest a friendly amendment.
Please do.
And reject the ordinance.
Yes.
And discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? One nay. Okay? Thank you. That was just really... Okay, I don't see any further business. Oh, God, I'm sorry. Where's Lynda Beerly and the rest of them? I apologize. Lynda Beerly? Can you remember what you wanted to talk about, Lynda?
Thank you very much. So, I am Lynda Beerly. I live in Ward Eight. And I've heard a lot of talk about safety tonight, and I'm here to speak about safety in our neighborhood association meetings. So, please let me take you back to the September 18th meeting of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. The room is packed. One of the leaders of the bridge advocacy group is speaking. He is accusing two of the volunteers on the land use committee of conflicts of interest. The volunteers are not present to defend themselves. He is questioning their motives and their integrity. And his speech is effective. You can feel the anger and the outrage building in the room. At the climax of his speech, he asked the rhetorical question, "Who does not have a problem with this?" And this is a decisive moment. You can feel the tension in the room. Suddenly, from behind me comes a firm, strong voice saying, "I don't have a problem with it." I will always be grateful to that voice, to that person who had the courage to speak out. Now, there was a lot going on in his speech. There is the immediate attempt to discredit the volunteers. There is also an attempt to undermine the credibility of the land use committee. And there is intimidation, the creation of such a climate of fear that no one is going to challenge this group. They will simply make it so uncomfortable that opponents will not feel it's worthy to stay involved. But the real damage is this. The chair spent the next half hour of our meeting explaining state and local conflict of interest law. Brady Rogers spent another 20 minutes confirming the chair's explanation. This is time that should have been spent on the work of the neighborhood association. We should have been hearing from the police officer. We should have been discussing our goals for the upcoming year. We could have been hearing from committees about work accomplished and work planned, but our attention was diverted. Neighborhood associations are advisory to city council. They are made up of volunteers that work on a wide range of neighborhood issues, from the mundane to the critical. They are not public officials, and they should not be. The grassroots nature, the freedom to speak out, the safety of participants, the willingness to accept diversity of opinion, these are the qualities that make neighborhood associations work. We must protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Any questions? Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. My name is Herb Shaw. I'm a resident of Ward Eight, a business owner in Ward One. I want to encourage you to follow up with action necessary to fulfill your obligation to purchase right-of-way for Marine Drive. I've attached for you, for your convenience, an excerpt from the city council agenda item number 7A dated March 20, 2008, whereby Peter Fernandez, P.E., at the time, interim public works director, interim public works director, presented their case for supporting a referral for the November 2008 streets and bridges bond measure. Please notice in the attachments, Table Two, Recommended Project List includes an item on page 11 under the caption "Congestion Relief Projects Strategic Right-of-Way Purchases", unquote. That states the following, and I'm quoting, "Purchase future street and highway right-of-way in advance of new Lamont River Bridge and associated bridge and ramp connections in order to preserve for future development, preserve from, I'm sorry, from future development. Once a preferred alternative aligned by approved, is approved by the Federal Highway Administration, purchase future street right-of-way in order to construct Marine Drive Northwest. Projects funds can be used to construct Marine Drive Northwest with city council approval", unquote. The purchase of said right-of-way was a commitment, a promise, if you will, to the citizens of our city upon passing, passage of the bond measure. On page 21 of the March 10, 2008 Agenda Item 7A, the narrative under project delivery included the statement, quote, "Staff recommends that $98.6 million in projects be delivered over an eight-year schedule beginning in 2009 and achieving substantial completion of all original projects by 2016," unquote. The staff schedule at that time indicated Marine Drive right-of-way acquisition to begin July of 2011 with completion December 2014. I submit to you that the council is actually and morally obligated to implement the purchase of right-of-way immediately. In 2008, staff assured the council that should a decision for the third bridge be delayed too long, the bond funds would be used solely to purchase right-of-way for Marine Drive, followed by construction thereof. This was the intent, and that was what the people voted for, so please live up to your commitment and do the right thing by purchasing right-of-way for Marine Drive this year. I appreciate your listening to my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Thank you. Mr. Van Dyke?
Hope I haven't used my three minutes.
No, we won't wait till, we might give you a couple extra minutes just for waiting through this thing.
Mr. Mayor and counselors, I'm Don Van Dyke, 1921 Spice Tree Lane Southeast. Been a resident there for several weeks now. Right after moving here, I went on a three-week vacation, came back, and found out I was cited for a violation of land use and have to remove my livestock by Friday. My livestock. Anybody know what livestock is?
What do you think?
Cows, sheep, horses, llamas. They're all mammals. They all have fur. They, they have live birth. I have four ducks that I've had since they were hatchlings, two days old. Dudley is the male. He doesn't crow. Ducks, drakes don't crow. And the females are Patty, Maxine, and Laverne, in case anybody remembers the Andrews. Very good. There's a couple of seniors in the group. I started working with ducks, caring for ducks, 70 years ago, off and on. And I don't know where to turn, so I've come to this council meeting, hoping we can get a postponement or something. I don't know how to proceed. I heard tonight some very serious discussions, and I know this is a very minor thing compared to what's been discussed, but I'm here to ask for your compassion.
How about our help? Let us see what we can do to help you out on this. You've got a compliance order. We don't allow ducks under our livestock ordinance, so we'll, it's going to be difficult to resolve quickly, but let's see what we can do, okay?
Well, actually...
Did the ducks get in somebody else's yard?
What's that?
Did they get in someone else's yard?
No.
Does anybody know you had ducks?
They don't fly. My ducks don't fly.
Well, how'd they find out you had ducks?
What did they do when you were on vacation?
My sister was caring for them.
Oh.
I'd like to point out that what's been written for chickens would apply. I would be in compliance if ducks were included under the chicken allowance.
Is an extension needed? How long were you given to comply?
By Friday, the 29th.
Okay. We'll talk with you for a minute. We'll have the city attorney talk with you before this evening's over.
Thank you.
He'll work it out.
I think rabbits are in the same boat.
Yeah, rabbits are in the same boat, yeah.
I just want us to get all of our ducks in order, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Van Dyke.
It's not a harebrained idea.
There's plenty of U of O fans.
Okay, we can. You want another bite of the apple?
Sure, sure. Apple's hard for me.
Okay.
For the record, my name's Kenneth Hetzel. I live at 745 Harris Street, and I'll try to be funny.
Very brief.
But, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I will tell you something that I never heard as a Vietnam veteran. Thanks for your service. I recommend that we double your pay. And y'all understand why. City manager last year and the year before, I came and asked for a $200 grant for Hands Across the Bridge to pay for Marion Square Park, and I sent an email to Peter Fernandez, and I haven't heard anything about that. I wish that we could proceed on that to help fund that. Voting, I wish I could say I voted for all of y'all, but I think DOJ would come. I can say that I did vote for some of y'all twice. In Tennessee, we say, "Vote early, vote often." And thanks. It's nice to be, what I want to start is make Salem a city of the people, for the people, and by the people. A city of the people, for the people, by the people. Salem is a city of the people, for the people, by the people. Thank you, and good night.
Thanks. Meeting's adjourned.